Good evening, everyone. I just want to welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Napanee regular session of council for January 31st, 2023. I think just before we get going, I'd just like to give our condolences to the Cruji family in the passing of Peter Cruji. I don't know if many people that know Peter, but he was an integral part of the community, a longtime member of the community and served actually on the Police Department for the Town of Napanee when it was functioning and raised right rise to the rank of Chief of the Napanee Police Force and the last member, last chief of the Napanee Police Force. So our condolences go out to the Cruji family and we're sorry for your losses. Having said that, we'll call the meeting to order. Just to remind everybody that this evening's meeting is being streamed on live streamed on the YouTube channel and it'll also be able to be watched later on. So with that, we'll call the meeting to order. I'll look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda as displayed, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Questions, comments, concerns, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. We'll move on to the deputations. Now, we have a number of deputations tonight. First, on the on the list, it would be Jane Lovell from the Adolphus Town Fredericksburg Heritage Society. She's provided some information to us prior to and just to remind everyone doing deputations tonight that have provided information in advance that we try and stay on the 10-minute time limit. So if we're getting close to the end and we're getting close to finishing up, we can extend a little bit, but we really, really, really want to try and stay on that 10-minute time limit. So having said that, Jane, go ahead.
Well, um, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before council. I am making this deputation on behalf of the Adolphus Town Fredericksburg Heritage Society. One of the goals of the society is to, can you go back, please? Is to protect, preserve our local cemeteries. And since we were established in 1987, we've spent hundreds of hours in the local cemeteries maintaining and restoring them. So I'm driving. Okay, you can drive. Thank you. So the purpose of this evening's deputation is twofold. Firstly, we are proposing to have an arrangement between the town and the Heritage Society for the maintenance of some of the abandoned cemeteries in the former townships of Adolphus Town North and South Fredericksburg. Now, these are, this constitutes all of Greater Napanee, south of the Napanee River. So the proposed arrangement is described in a memorandum of understanding and that was in the agenda package and I'm not going into any detail here, detailed detail about that now. So secondly, we are looking for a, to have the funding for the portion of the work to be done by the town and that's the removal of trees to be included in the budget. Next. So who cares? This statement came out by, was issued recently by the Ontario Historical Society. It's kind of fancy words, but it hits the main concepts. Of course, cemeteries are sacred places and as such deserve respect. The stones are historical record telling the stories of families and these stories constitute our collective heritage and provide community continuity within the community. Now, what I selected for the photo to accompany the slide, it was taken in one of our abandoned cemeteries. This is Woodcock on the River Road. It's for Eleanor Woodcock, who died in 1854 at 53 years old. She, along with those, all those buried in these cemeteries were real people who lived and died here. Of course, this is important to the family still in the area, but the recent surge in DNA testing is fueling a growing interest in genealogy and that in turn is leading to increased heritage tourism, which might be interesting for us, not only to the cemeteries, but also to museums, archives, churches, other historic area heritage sites in the area. Next. So we have a lot of cemeteries in Adolphus Town and Fredericksburg. Most of them are inactive and are considered abandoned. Now, the municipality is responsible by law to maintain these cemeteries. However, some of them are maintained by other people. Some are not accessible. They can't be got to by road or, and in fact, some of them don't even have stones visible. So this lands us up with nine abandoned cemeteries maintained by the municipality. Next. So what this means when we're talking about maintenance is of course the mowing of grass, the removal of fallen trees and branches to facilitate the mowing and the removal of dead and dying trees that threaten the gravestones or fences. Now, I want to point out that we're not talking about the writing or repairing of fallen grains or damaged gravestones. Now, while the first two bullets might be taken as a given, they are not always done and the failure to do any of these things results in cemeteries being, becoming overgrown and trees falling and damaging the stones. Next. Okay, so the problem, all three of these photos were taken in Carscaleen Cemetery. This is on the River Road. And this just illustrates what happens when a tree that is dead is not taken down proactively, it falls in the cemetery. Now, this was a biggie. It came down and fortunately did not hit any stones or fences. It did though dig itself into the ground and these cemeteries have burials throughout the site, often not marked by stones. So digging itself in is not great. It shouldn't be disturbing the site in this way. If we don't remove these trees as they come down, then of course we can't mow and once we can't mow, the brush grows up and we're talking small, small trees and shrubs, day lilies, raspberries, grapevine, and you can see the result of those photos. Next. So our solution up until now is we grab our loppers and in the past, we've had cemetery bees where volunteers go in and remove the brush. Next. So this, we did tackle Carscaleen in 2014. These are some befores and afters. I'm not going to go into great detail about it because the problem with before pictures is they're so overgrown, you don't know what you're looking at. However, I'll just briefly go through these ones. On the top left, we have the central monument. It has a decorative wire fence around it, which is threaded with grapevine. Grapevine is growing up on the brush that's grown up behind it and then up into the trees. And in the photograph below, there's a small sign at the entrance of the cemetery and that's raspberry bushes that have grown into the site. The after shot is on the left or right rather, shows that the monument is clear of vines as it's fence and it's clear up to the forest behind the raspberry bushes have been removed from the fence and that pile in the middle is some of what we removed. It just hasn't been removed yet. Next. Last of the after shots, the brown areas are where we cleared. So all that area was brush, some description. We cleared back to the fence line, which is visible in all three of those shots and then we seeded it. After each bee, we met with the town to arrange for the debris to be removed, which they did. More critically, we have had verbal agreements with the town to mow the cleared areas and to remove the dead fall promptly. And sadly, this did not happen. And so fast forward to this fall and Carscaleen was back in more or less the same shape as it was when we tackled it first in 2014. Next. So definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting the same results. Well, we fell into that and we did Carscaleen twice. We did it in 2010 and 2014 and we are now back in the same situation we were at the beginning of those times. So we're going to try and switch it up. Next. So what we did is we created a memorandum of understanding for the town and the Heritage Society to work together. In it, we set out the responsibilities, some processes and it defines some oversight. As I mentioned, I'm not going to go into the details of the agreement or the proposed agreement at this point. However, in a nutshell, all it contains is the following, that the Heritage Society to do an initial cleanup with the town to help in rendering dead fall and removing the debris. And once the sites are cleared for the town to go in and maintain them, which means mowing to the perimeters often enough to prevent the grapevine and raspberry canes from reestablishing themselves, removing whatever falls down in it quickly enough to keep the mowing up and then proactively removing dead and dying trees that threaten the fences and stones. Next. Cost of town, this will, there are some costs of the town. Now, the scope of the project of the nine cemeteries that the town is currently looking after, we're talking about three, Carscaleen on the River Road, Rombo in Sillsville. This is tiny cemetery that is although in theory being maintained by the town is actually not being mown, but once it's mown, it or cleared rather, it can be easily kept mown with a trim, a string trimmer. And Loyce Cemetery on Hay Bay South Shore Road is a well-maintained cemetery, but we do need to have some trees taken down there. We, what we did is we sent the MOU to the cemetery staff and their understanding of it, along with a site visit, led them to believe that except for felling the trees, the work was doable and could be incorporated into the existing work schedules and budget. So this leaves the removal of the, of trees and we're talking two to three per year. Now, the problem with these trees is they're very tall and quite big. And while some of them can be felled from the base, the normal way, chop it down, let it fall, it won't hit anything. Most of them cannot be taken down in this way. Because of the conditions at the sites, no heavy equipment can get in. So you can't take a lift truck to get in there and take it down in stages. So mostly this will need, mean that we need to get somebody in to climb up and take it down in that way. Next. So the purpose of tonight's deputation is to have council approve some expenditure for tree removal in our abandoned cemeteries. And the next steps as we see them is for town staff to cost the work and to have those costs included in the budget. The cemetery staff to work with the heritage group to finalize the MOU and to sign it for the cemetery staff to develop procedures to achieve their portion of the work. And finally, for all this to come together so that we can actually get in there and start clearing these cemeteries in the spring of this year. And that is my pitch.
Thanks, Jane. Do we have any questions of Jane? Does council have any questions? Counselor Norrie, go ahead.
I'm just curious. You mentioned history and that. Do you find a lot of people from out of town would explore these? And if we clean them up, would it happen even more? I know, I know you don't take counts.
We need a deer camera set up on those cemetery sites. The problem is these are, there's nobody at these sites like Chris Callan, you have to go down a little lane. So unless we happen to be in them, which we aren't frequently enough, obviously, because things kind of grown and we didn't know about it. So I can't, I do not know the numbers. It's likely few, not a lot. It could be boosted. I know at some point they were doing geocaching in some of these abandoned cemeteries, which is a great way of introducing people to these sites. A lot of them are really pretty. And you know, it's nice to get people in there. So I don't have an answer to your question. No, not at all.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor. You're saying two to three trees per year for five years. So is there only 15 trees right now that you feel approximately that?
Approximately.
That's going to be the main cost for the town.
Yeah, well, and obviously we're flexible on these. They haven't fallen down yet. The problem is if they fall down and really they'll smash a stone and this is irreparable history. You can't really get them back together. So we would like to have them come down as quickly as, as possible, but we are suggesting just a couple of years to spread it over these years and for, you know, once you engage somebody, they can come in and tell you what they think it's most likely to come down. Like we know that there's one that's very dead in Carscaleen and it's as big as the one that fell down there. So.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much for that. I was just curious how many, you know, are ready to fall and how many?
We can't tell. The problem is.
I know you're not a tree expert, but.
Well, I have some experience here, but it's the. Carscaleen and well, most of them, Carscaleen and Rombo particularly, they have ash in and around. So while they were lovely forests a few years ago, they're mostly dead now or dying. And I mean, the dead ash, the limbs fall, the trees generally stay up for a while, but you know, depending on the size of the limb, that can threaten things too and people for that matter. But you know, to your point, there's not a lot of people in there generally. But yeah, it is a consideration.
Great. Counselor Penau, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Jane, thank you very much for the presentation. So as I'm reading through here and listening to it, out of all of the cemeteries that you've listed, the nine of them, we would just need to look at cleaning up three of them. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. So my concerns here are that to remove a tree is very expensive, especially how you describe it, that there's no way of getting equipment in there, bucket trucks, that sort of thing. I don't believe that town has the certification to scale a tree and to be able to bring it down. So therefore we'd have to hire that out. I think what I'd feel more comfortable in is sending somebody out to get a quote. So we know kind of money that we're sitting at before we go any further to approve anything here. And especially with budget time coming up right now, it's, it's a tight budget as it is. So I wouldn't want to be shocked as to, you know, it could be.
And that's why.
Thousands of dollars to bring down a tree.
We did propose these as next steps that before, obviously before it can go into, we can, I can't give you any costs. I have no idea. I mean, I personally, we've personally had people come down and take our own trees down and we could afford it, but, but absolutely, it needs to be done by a professional. And I was expecting it to be outsourced to, to somebody to come in and we've got a number of tree services that will come in and, and certainly once it'll scale to like, some of them won't. They want to do it with a lift truck, but there's at least one guy who will climb up and take them down. And, and depending on how the town wants to deal with it, if they're happy, it's, it's cheaper if they just fell it, bring it down. And if the town is prepared to do the rendering, you know, chop it up into smaller pieces and get it into a truck and take it away, give it away, sell it, you know, like there's, there's lots of options for, for getting rid of the wood without having the tree service do it all, because they will, they'll take everything down and take it away. But that's more expensive than having them just take the tree down so that it's safe and then going in and, you know, the cemetery staff as time allows, chop it up and I'm guessing there are trees that come down all the time.
Yeah. So.
Yep. No, that's great. And just to follow up, so again, you're asked for us to do what tonight, then? You want us to?
Uh, think about it.
Okay. That's a good answer.
I mean. And you're going to lead right into what I'm going to have to say, but go ahead.
Yeah. We, I can't give you a cost, so I can't say, give me $2,000 a year. And maybe that, that's an appropriate amount. I don't know. But, and obviously it's, it has to fit in with other priorities for the town, but these, the, the falling trees, the other work is not a big deal. Like it's just, it's getting processed. That's why it fell afoul last time. This process wasn't followed and things fell in and it wasn't cleared up and then everything went berserk. But so that part is easy if we follow procedure. The trees obviously are more expensive. So, and you can't budget for it until you get it, but you know, you could call a guy and take him out to the site and let him have a look.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? What I was going, normally we, we, with, with the deputations, we're not in a position to make decisions like this tonight, and especially when it involves costs that are going to be required. You brought forward a very detailed report and a very detailed deputation, including a memorandum of understanding. And it sounds like you've probably been working with staff already. I'm guessing this is the first time we as a council have seen it, but you've been working with staff, I'm guessing already.
Uh, well, sort of. I mean, we, we knew we needed to write it down. So we said, well, let's do this in a professional way. So I cooked up the memorandum of understanding and then we did send it to the cemetery staff and to Brent Zadaberg. So that staff is aware of it.
Okay. What, what I will suggest and we can do it by way of motion is that we'll note and receive your deputation tonight and maybe we can instruct staff to, to work with you and come back with, we are in budget time right now and things will be tight. However, we can't guess at it either, right? So we can ask staff to come back with maybe a staff report in the next two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. I'll leave it with Brent. But in order to come back with a staff report, what kind of time schedule are we looking at, Brent?
Your worship would have to be part of the two upcoming budget meetings, one of those two.
Yeah, which I think one is on the 16th of February, but that, and that'll give you sufficient time to work with Ms. Lovell to, to come up with. So we have some numbers to look at and see if it will actually fit into our budget.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll look for a motion. If everybody's good with that, to note and receive and to instruct staff to bring back a report on the proposal on the 16th of February that will identify costs and, and some of the finer details we, we haven't seen tonight or heard tonight. Fair enough. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Is there any further comments or questions? Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This is part of our history. So it's, that's just very dear to everybody else that sits around this table. But when Brad goes out for costing and there's a certain amount of tree dollars already, but I know one personally and we knocked down our tree that we had very close to the house that actually did it for free. But since it's.
Talk him into that.
My son. There's a deferred cost there, but all I'm saying is since it's for the cemeteries, you know what I mean? And it's one day, it's amazing how quick he did and he scaled up and moved on. And there's certain things that maybe, you know, some people can donate to also because it is for a cemetery. It's not like it's a street job or something else. So when Greg goes out to talk to all the individuals, I imagine there's something could possibly be done that way, too.
Hey, yeah, it sounds like there's probably a bunch of different avenues we can look at as well. So is there anything else, any further? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you, Ms. Lovell. And, and like I say, we'll, we'll get a report back from staff on the 16th of February and see where it fits into our, into our budgetary discussions going forward. So thank you.
And thank you.
Next up is 4.2. We have a deputation from Michelle Hammeras and Rob Laidlaw with respect to exotic animals by law. And from what I understand, they will be zooming in. Am I correct, Ms. Walters? Are they coming? Okay. I see some faces. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Welcome, welcome to Napanee, even if it is through Zoom. We have Michelle Hammeras and Rob Laidlaw.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you. Normally what we do is we try and keep this to about 10 minutes and there may be some questions afterwards, but I'll let you move forward with it and tell us what you need to tell us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle are, okay, great. And I will indicate when I want you to move the slides forward. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. It's a pleasure to be virtually in Napanee tonight. I'm here to talk to you about exotic animals. As the slide suggests, we were recently informed by one of our supporters that there was a bylaw review going on in Napanee that involved exotic animals. So I reached out to two of your staff, Aggie Hill and Jessica Walters, and both Michelle and I spoke, spoke to them. And then we decided to ask for delegation status tonight to talk about this issue. So hopefully it'll be useful. What we're wanting to talk to you about and ask is that in our conversations with your staff, we said that it would be very, very useful to inform your bylaw if we had an opportunity to provide some relevant, relevant input to the deliberations on the bylaw. We noticed a number of things that we think could be tightened up or could be improved. And in fact, the template that's being used for your bylaw, we actually had a major role in creating that for the County of Hastings. So we're very familiar with what's being proposed. One of the things we noticed is that the thrust of, of the bylaw is, and particularly the list of animals is safety only. And you can proceed that way if you want, but typically most municipalities these days are moving to address a number of relevant issues. And Michelle, do you want to move it forward, please? And these issues encompass quite a range and some municipalities deal with them all, some deal with only a few, but certainly human health and safety is a major aspect in the formulation of bylaws and regulations for exotic animals, but also animal welfare. A lot of municipalities mistakenly think that animal welfare. aspect in the formulation of bylaws and regulations for exotic animals, but also animal welfare. A lot of municipalities mistakenly think that animal welfare is dealt with by the provincial animal welfare services. But they have a very limited scope in what they can do within a municipality. And a great deal of the responsibility for animal welfare actually does reside with the municipalities in which the animals are located. So I think animal welfare and hu, human health and safety are directly relevant to the town of Napanee. And, and probably nuisance issues and cost issues, they tend to be ones that surface, but you can see some of the others there as well. There's, there's often a very broad consideration of a number of these different aspects of exotic animals when you're looking at them. Now, one of the things that we, we typically do when we're doing these discussions to tell you a little bit about why we think certainly from a welfare perspective, that, that a lot of these animals need this, this extra consideration, especially since public sensibilities and values are changing and people are more concerned. So I wanted to use reptiles as an example. You want to move that slide, Michelle? And we like to point out to people that a lot of these animals are treated sort of as biological robots or commodities, and that they're actually not. When you look at these animals, right across the board, whether they're mammals or birds or reptiles or amphibians, they have complex lives. And they live in complex environments that are usually unlike you see in someone's home that is allowed to keep them in a municipality. And you can see the various reptiles here, this American alligator and this monitor lizard, desert tortoise and chameleon. You see right there that they're situated right in these complex environments. And that's something that really sort of illustrates where they should be. Next. And one of the things that we like to get across to people is that, and particularly people who are in policymaking or, or other, other aspects of government, is that these animals are very like, very much like the other animals. They deserve the same types of considerations as dogs and cats. And unbeknownst to many, many people, when you look at some of these so-called lower animals like reptiles and amphibians, they actually have all of the same types of attributes as these so-called higher animals. So they have intelligence and long-term memories and they cooperate with each other. They solve problems like the puzzle feeder the snake is engaged in, and they have rich social lives. And they can even self-recognize something only great apes and dolphins and humans were thought to do in years past. So these are animals that really deserve a lot of consideration at every level of government. Next. And I'm going to turn it over to Michelle now. And, but just before I do, I was a little bit remiss in not really identifying who I am. I'm Executive Director of Zoo Check. We're a wildlife protection group that's been around for 40 years. And I'm a chartered biologist and have worked across the country and in other jurisdictions on exactly these types of regulatory measures at the municipal level and at other levels of government. So I'll turn that over to Michelle right now to continue on.
Thanks, Rob. I was gonna mention that about the introduction. So my name is Michelle Hammeras. Haven't been around yet for 40 years, but I've been working on captive wildlife issues for about 10, 12 years. I have a background in animal welfare and behavior and specialize in captive wildlife behavior. I'm the Wildlife Campaign Manager at Wildland Protection, and we are an international animal protection organization, the largest in Canada. And we work on captive wildlife issues like exotic pets and, and these types of initiatives. And we've worked with federal, provincial and municipal governments to really move the needle for these animals. So going on to what Rob mentioned earlier about how these animals are treated, one of the things that we're seeing, and when you talk about it to veterinarians, is that with these animals, they, they get sick in captivity like our dogs and cats. But unlike our dogs and cats, the issues that veterinarians are seeing with these animals are diseases that are caused because of their captivity, whereas a dog or a cat might die or, or from being old or get cancer because of, of old age. What we're seeing typically in exotic animals, like the parrots and the reptiles and such, is that there are a lot of issues and diseases that occur because of their captivity, which is very different than the domesticated animals like your dog or your cat. So examples are malnutrition, and this is the picture you're seeing. It's a, it's a turtle that is suffering from metabolic bone disease, and that's caused purely to malnutrition, like an imbalance of, of nutrition in their diet. Other things that are seen is dehydration, skin burns, because these animals, reptiles are ectothermic, so they rely on external heat to process their their, their, the diet and such, and to, 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 I'm sorry, I lost four words. But they're ectothermic, so they rely on external heat and external light to, to live and to be able to digest and to be able to move. And so those are things that are quite complex. And for an average owner, which we're talking about today, probably, it's quite difficult to meet these needs of these animals. And often that we're seeing is that they're unable to meet them. And this ends up in, in the suffering that many animals undergo when they are kept in, in people's homes. So just an example here, and I don't know if this video will work, so let's see. Ah, there you go. So what you can see here is we, it's an abnormal behavior, which is again caused by captivity, which means that you wouldn't see this in the world. Reptiles in particular are not used to boundaries, especially transparent boundaries. And they don't typically understand that they are in a tank or in a, in a, in an enclosure that limits their movement. So what they do is that they will crawl up against a glass over and over again until they get injured on their noses, on their, on their digits. And it can become quite severe. And this is a very common abnormal behavior that we're seeing. And just a very clear example of what these animals go through when they are kept in captivity, because their understanding of it is, is quite limited. A couple of examples of how these animals are typically kept in like households or how it's being advertised. Many of these animals are advertised as being easy to keep or beginner pets, which actually they are not. It's, it's, it's a misinterpretation. And personally, I think it's because these animals cannot communicate with us like a dog or a cat can, right? Like a dog can bark or, or, or growl or communicate in facial expression with moving their ears or their, or their tail, whereas these animals aren't capable of doing that. So therefore, while this animal, this animal might be alive, it won't necessarily be capable very much to, to show their owner that they're not living their best lives. And a lot of what we're seeing is that how these animals are kept at home is very minimalistic settings. And as you saw earlier in some of the pictures, is that these animals are actually coming from very complex kind of habitats with different, you know, with different soil, different ways to hide, different feet, different climates, which is pretty impossible to replicate in captivity. And this one of the last pictures to show you, and I know it's not very clear, but this is typically how these animals are being bred in great numbers. And as you can see, the quality of life might not be, is not very good. And we can compare this type of like breeding with puppy mills, where a lot of animals are being bred just for the sake of producing and that the producing animal becomes worthless eventually. And as you can see, they only have like a little bit of water. And often when these animals grow and get longer, they don't, they can't even stretch in these kind of like drawers. And another side note on this is that people can keep these drawers in their basements, right? So people wouldn't even know that, for example, you have somebody living next to you that has 100 or 200 snakes in, in your house or next, next door. Is it possible to keep animals in appropriate conditions? It is. But we do believe that when we look at the average owner of these animals, that it's quite complex, that you need a lot of money to take care of an animal in a proper way, need a lot of space. And therefore, we think that there might be some extra considerations that can be given to, to the exotic bylaws it has been written.
Yeah, and I just wanted to jump in to close off. And I think this is the fastest we've ever given this little presentation. But I wanted to, to stress that every municipality can actually do a lot to help animals protect public safety, prevent nuisance issues without really increasing burden on municipal finances or staff. And we've been gaining considerable traction right across the country in municipalities as well as provincially with the kinds of actions that can be taken to, to help out. One of, one of them regards, is regarding the actual regulatory scheme. And you can see here on the slide, there is a positive list regulatory scheme with the benefits of that, and then the negative list regulatory scheme. What they mean is the positive list is a list of animals you are allowed to keep. The negative list, which is a little bit more prevalent, is the animals that you can't keep. And we would like an opportunity to sit down with your staff to discuss possible options, regardless of which way you go, and to help them to tighten up the bylaw and make it as good as it can be. Of course, following whatever direction that council chooses to go in. So I think that's, yeah, like I said, I think that's the fastest we've ever sort of went through this, but hopefully it was useful. And I guess we're able to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Michelle and Rob. Is there any questions of, of the two folks around the screen now? We will be having a, I'm sure, a more robust conversation later on in the, the meeting with respect to the bylaw. But i, is there any questions that, that may help us or assist us for the, the pending conversation? Counselor Penel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thanks, Rob and Michelle, for providing your opinion on, on this. And I was just, just wondering, you mentioned earlier in the presentation before you started that you had a chance to look at our proposed bylaw. Was it the bylaw that we have? Sorry, what was it that you looked at? Was it the proposed bylaw?
Yes, I believe so. It stated, the staff report is dated January 10th, 2023. And this is the, as I mentioned previously, a template that we basically created for the County of Hastings, which was subsequently adopted by, I believe, six different municipalities in the county.
With reviewing that, did you see very much that we need in your views and, and verbiage of tightening up? Is there, is there much there?
Well, well, certainly. I, I think that the animals list, should you want to retain a negative list, could, could be tightened up a little bit. And there were other as, aspects of it, but they were relatively minor. So that, that's one of the reasons I said I think this could be done. Tighten up a little bit with relatively little work and without increasing burden on the city. But I think the primary thing would be to look at options for the two types of regulatory systems using positive list regulation versus negative list regulation. And then you choose what you feel best fits your situation, but, but then you understand what's available as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
That's your worship. So did I hear you're right? You've been doing this, this, this job for 40 years?
Yes, I'm one of the dinosaurs in this sector in Canada. Yes, I started back in 19, well, more than 40 years. I started doing this work in 1979.
Very good. Thank you. I, I thought you said 40, and it's, I wish to have somebody with your kind of experience and knowledge talking to us. Thank you very much.
Is there any other questions? I, I guess the only, and, and I think you've answered it, Rob, is that you've assisted with a number of other municipalities in creating their bylaw? And I think you think you might have said six for sure, at least with respect to Hastings.
No, no, it's, it's far greater than that. That was one particular effort involving Hastings Highlands dealing with basically an illegal roadside zoo in their community. And it took, it was a 16-month process that involved a lot of work with the County of Hastings. And then subsequently with the individual municipalities that, that didn't already have exotic animal bylaws in the county. And then there were others that were being preventative. The one right to the west of Hastings Highlands also developed a bylaw as a preemptive measure to prevent certain animals and, and this particular operator moving just across the boundary into their community. Throughout the years, I would say we've been involved probably in about 200 or 300 different initiatives municipally dealing with exotic pets, dealing with transient animal performances and shows, dealing with local zoo issues, a broad range of issues, but it would be 200 to 300 of them over, over the years.
Great. And so, so there's lots of experience. And I guess the only other question is, is do you feel it's imperative that there's consistency throughout the province or throughout the area with respect to the bylaws? From my background, I would suggest that maybe there, there should be some consistency with, they don't have to be exactly the same. They could be tailored to each municipality, but there should be so, at least some form of consistency with respect to the bylaws from municipality to municipality?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of inconsistencies. A lot of bylaws were written in the 80s and 90s and early 2000s. And you know, sort of the standard for them today is a little bit different. And I think that we've covered that in the development of this County of Hastings bylaw. We, we surveyed bylaws right across the country, looked at what they were doing. We did a, a much broader jurisdictional scan as well. So we took what we will felt were, were the best parts of all. And we've been promoting this, as has others across the province. Unfortunately, the province has not provided any direction to municipalities, and that's why we see this inconsistency. But there are commonalities as well. And as we move forward into the future, more and more municipalities, both rural and urban, you know, that they are becoming more consistent. And that's partially driven by groups like us. It's partially by local citizens. It's partially by just, you know, greater sensibilities in the public about animals and new science and all those things. But yeah, the consistency certainly needs to get better, but I think it's moving in that direction.
Yep, perfect. That's, that's great. Is, did anything come from my comments at all? Is there any other questions from these folks? Seeing none, I'd just like to thank you for, for doing the deputation tonight. It's, it, for me personally, has been very educational and, and I think it's going to assist with our conversation later on tonight. So thank you for, for taking the time and for presenting to us. And and I apologize, we only have 10 minutes, but we are on, we are on a kind of a strict timeline here. So, but thank you very much.
Well, thank you and good luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll look for a, a motion to note and receive the deputation from Michelle Hammeras and Rob Laidlaw. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Penel. Is there any other further questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Next up, 4.3, Rennie Hutslar with respect to the BIA. Nice to see you again, Rennie.
My pleasure.
And, and as you heard, we're gonna try and stay on some.
I got the 10-minute one.
Great, perfect. Thank you.
I did bring copies for everybody, but what I thought I would do was I'd hand them out later so that I could have their undivided attention while I was reading the presentation.
Yeah, very good. Thanks.
Between past deputations and the public meeting, you've been given a lot of information about what a BIA is and how it can help support your work at the municipal council level. I want to address some of the questions that have arisen since. Were there problems in the BIA? Yes. In February 2020, the executive director left, and before the board could hire someone for that role, COVID lockdowns began, leaving a fairly inexperienced board to handle keeping their own bills paid, managing the operations of an organization without understanding, and dealing with a strong personality, calling, emailing and visiting their businesses weekly and sometimes daily. Problems that both the CAO and the mayor saw and experienced firsthand. Their breakdown can be attributed to governance issues and not adhering to Robert's Rules of Order. Council at the time chose to dissolve the BIA instead of helping to identify their problems and provide a solution. It took less effort to dissolve the BIA than to help them. I was questioned when I submitted my request for a second deputation. I was told that my deputation was better suited to a later date after council reviewed the staff report. It has been over a month since my last deputation, and I have since learned that reinstating the BIA will take longer than the 60 days. It will take at least 90 days. So my potential February deputation would put the operation of the BIA well into May. We have already missed the student subsidy program. Beautification efforts would be last minute and summer event planning would be next to impossible. Beautification efforts would be last minute and summer event planning would be next to impossible. In the April 22 staff report to council, it was noted that staff would be in regular correspondence with the downtown and that staff would distribute regular customer service surveys to the downtown businesses throughout the year to understand the needs and wants of the businesses. Those discussions between staff and merchants have not happened. Staff have had three opportunities to present their 2023 monetary vision for the downtown merchants to council. August 2022, December 22, and now January 23. The merchants have never been asked for their input, their recommendations or any consultation whatsoever. Despite my last presentation to reinstate the BIA and my presentation for the late night shopping party funding, even I have not been approached for my input. When the merchants wanted to host a late night shopping party, we submitted our request for funds and were told there was no money left in the 2021 surplus. It took well over a month to get a budget versus actual for the surplus funds. When I received the report from John Pinson on October 31st of 2022, the report showed 33,000 in unspent funds from our initial 77,000 surplus. I asked for an updated report in January of 2023 and was told by John Pinson that there were no significant changes from the report I received in October. At our January 12th meeting, we were told the January 31st report to council would show, and I quote, "how the BIA transition budget was operated in 2022," end of quote. The January 31st staff report only shows the budget numbers, no values for money spent. October was a significant amount, a month for the merchants of the downtown Nappany. For the majority, for the majority of us, that is when we found out about the Bay of Quinty marketing contract. This contract and its details were shared with the ad hoc merchants association in the summer. The details were never passed on to merchants that were not part of that group. At that same meeting I had with John in October, I expressed my concern about the cost of this contract and that we were not getting anywhere close to the value and he might want to ask for a progress report. January 31st staff report shows the Bay of Quinty expenses totaling 33,806. Of that total, approximately $7,400 was allocated to social media. So taking the amount of 7,400 and dividing it by the 80 Facebook posts, each Facebook post costs us $92.50. My social media person for Lansing charges me $250 a month for Facebook posts. She creates five posts a week, a combination of product photos and videos. My social media posts, including Instagram, cost me $12.50 per post. The January 31st staff report provides social media results from July to December of 2022. The increase of triple digits in reach percentages really means nothing, especially since the social media postings for the first half of 2022 were few and far between and totally stopped in March of 2022. My perspective, my perspective of the 80 social media posts, which are quite, you can, you can find them. Of the 80, 64 were original, two of them were giveaways, 14 were pictures of businesses and only four of the businesses were identified in their posts. 16 of the posts were parks and rivers and 27 were stock photos or graphics. Four were out of season. The $17,000, the 17,000 reach that they've articulated from January, from July to December, compared to the 2019 active social media of the BIA for the same period was 300,000. We provided staff, staff with our late night shopping party poster and we were told that if Bay Quity had room in their schedule, they would post it. Guess what? They didn't have room in their schedule and it never got posted. We, as a community of merchants, are finding that we are not being consulted, not being heard, not even included in the planning. I could go on about the beautification, but to what purpose? We, as a BIA, need town staff to help us in our efforts to get reinstated and to carry through our mandate. I believe we need to learn from the mistakes we've made in the past by both the members of the BIA and staff. I also believe, and many, many BIA members have said, we know now what we have lost when we lost the BIA. We now have strong and experienced leadership that have stepped up and are ready to get things back on track. We have all learned from these lessons, which bodes well for the future of reinstating the BIA. Attached, and I will hand it out later, is a copy of our petition that we had, we presented to the downtown merchants and to reinstate the BIA. And we have 22 signatures. And I just wanted, just to highlight some of the, well, the businesses. Nappany Opticians, Alanas, Dead Leaf, Ferguson Tile, My Ladies Lace, Touch of Class, Nappany Blooms, Lily's Aesthetics, Gibber District, Keto Bakery, Gray's IDA, Loafanale, the yoga place, I don't know how to say it, 23 Markets Square, Starlet, Lansing, Black Barn, 18 Mill Street, The Soup Company and Bab's Bakery. My recommendation is to reinstate the BIA. And during this 90-day period, the group of downtown merchants that have put their names forward to sit on the reinstated BIA, work along with a staff member to organize beautification, marketing and events until such time the BIA is operational. With the remaining surplus from the 2021, yeah, with the remaining surplus from 2021, compile a budget and use these funds to hire a part-time administrator, social media person and cover any expenses that result from this activity. Let's build the BIA. Let's build it better.
Thank you, Rennie. Is there any questions of Rennie? Seeing none, thank you for your deputation, Rennie. At, as you know, I, and I don't think I need to tell you that we're going to have a very robust conversation with respect to the, the BIA situation later on this evening. You have our commitment as a council that we're going to try and rectify or fix this or do something with it to make it functional. I mean, I think having the public meeting, I, and I'll speak for myself and I'll speak for council is, is I got a really good indication as to what happened maybe or what didn't happen. But we're here to fix it. We've, we've made a commitment and, and to try and rectify this very, very early on in this term of council because I think it's important. But that's what we're working towards. And I know we put a lot of time, I know personally, I put a lot of time and effort into doing a lot of research with respect to the BIA, with respect to the municipal act, with respect to how things could or should run. And, and I think that's very important. And, and I apologize if, if I personally didn't have that knowledge, but I think I have it now. And, and of course, we all don't know everything, but I, I think we're heading hopefully in, in the right direction. So if you have the time and it might be a late night, but you're more than welcome to stick around and watch and hear the conversations that we're going to have later on. And, you know, hopefully we can, we can make this thing better because, I mean, we're talking about our community here. So obviously I don't have all the answers, but collectively I think we as a council can come up with those answers. But we're going to try our best. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look for a motion to note and receive the deputation from Rennie Hutzler with respect to the BIA. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any other further questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Is there any deputations? I know we still have this in our procedural bylaw with respect to this evening that haven't been given to us prior to. We still have that on our bylaws. Obviously, they're not going to be as robust and we won't have as much time to listen to it. But we probably could find three to five minutes to, to, to listen. So I see a hand back there, Sean. Did you wish to make a deputation? Come on forward, just provide your name. I think we all know you, but you better provide your name for the record anyways.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson and counsel.
Just, just before you start, just so you know, we have to keep this, we can't go the full 10 minutes. So.
I'm very efficient. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sean Lucas. Very quickly, I just received this report after deputations are formally required to be accepted. It's hard when you have to deputize on Wednesday when the reports don't come out to Thursday. All I'm going to say is that I'm going to create a detailed response to the memorandum to council from staff in regards to the meeting and what to do here. I, I in some ways agree with Randy Hutzler on a few things. I totally disagree with her on other things. There's a lot of deficiencies in this report. There's a lot of gaps and I think there's lots of explanations required. I'm not happy with this. I think there's a lot of questions to be answered. I'll be coming back to council next meeting for this. Fundamentally, as I said before, this problem is bigger than the BIA. And when you deliberate tonight, please remember that the last board, the last membership, the last council, some members of this council and CAO rejected the concept of a BIA. Please remember that. And please remember that the boundaries are not what they were in 1978. We got to think bigger. We got to go bigger. Seeing this report, little unbelievable actually, and Rennie's touched a lot of things. You're not understanding the needs and the wants. And it's just not merchants. It's the property owners who are paying the levy. This is more than the storefronts. We have a problem. And I hope that you take in consideration everything that was presented last meeting. It's not 1978. I made a detailed list for this council. I see nothing in reference to it. I see nothing of the bigger picture. The biggest problem downtown is what I'm sitting in right now. How do you possibly expect me as a merchant and property owner to promote the downtown core when I look at a black hole every time I go down Center Street? There is positive in the situation, not negative. And the course I'm seeing here tonight is not the way to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be back next meeting with a detailed response to your report.
Thanks, Sean. Is there any questions or comments with respect to Sean's deputation? Counselor Pinnell, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Probably gonna not come out favorable on this, but Sean, there is, there is a progress, a process for this building. So maybe just hold tight and look at what we're doing here on this. Somehow, from that meeting that we had up the SBCA, I felt that by the deputations that we as a council were at fault. Yet we had 17 resignations in four years from the BIA. You're right, it's a big problem and it's not going to be fixed overnight.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? And, and I'm just going to reiterate what Counselor Pinnell said, Sean. This is that, I, I think you realize, you understand that we care about this community. This council cares about this community and we're going to do everything we can with respect to the community as a whole, as well as the downtown area. And, and the building we're sitting in here right now, I think you've heard and you'll probably hear it again in the not-too-distant future, that we're going to make a commitment to this building and, and to this downtown area. So don't for a minute think that we're not because we are and we've said it. And I think I've said it and I've said it and I've said it and I will continue to say it, that we are going to make a commitment to this building in this downtown area. So if we fail, that's on us. We're going to try not to fail because we think it's important. And I say we, I'll talk for council, but I, I'm talking for myself as well. So rest assured, and, and I think you probably realize that nothing happens overnight. If this one thing I've learned from municipal politics and politics in general is sometimes it just takes time. But we are, to use the, the golf analogy, there is some positive yards happening here. And, and I think we will. And, and like I say, if, if we don't, then you know what? It's on us. We're, we're, but we're going to do everything we can to make this thing work. So that's really all I had to say. So thank you.
Just in summary, Ms. Hutzler is correct with the lack of communication. You have willing partners downtown. It's going to be a struggle to find common ground, but it is required. Everyone, not 22 merchants, 165 property owners and merchants who have not been consulted. Thank you.
And that's, that's hopefully what we're going to try and address tonight. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Look for a motion to note and receive for the deputation of Sean Lucas. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Pinnell. Is there any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. We'll look for an adoption of the minutes. We'll look for a motion for the adoption, adoption of the minutes for the regular session of council on January 10th, 2023. And as well as, I think we can do this all in one motion, shall we not? Madam clerk, as well as for the special session of council, council on January 12th, 2023. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Is there any questions or comments or concerns with respect to those minutes, with respect to those two council meetings? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondents for information. I, I know that we've received a pile of correspondence for information. We'll look for a motion to note and receive and then we'll see if there's anything that anybody wants to pull out of that list. So note and receive, Counselor Shank, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull out and have a conversation about? Seeing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Correspondents for action, 6.2.1 RW Tomlinson, Nappany Quarry Public Liaison Committee. Is there anyone from staff that will or needs to speak to this, Madam clerk? Don't believe so? Okay, perfect. We have, we have a recommendation. First of all, we'll, we'll look for a motion with respect to the staff recommendation that council received from the correspondence from RW Tomlinson Limited. And further, council respectfully declined the invitation from RW Tomlinson Limited to appoint members to the public liaison committee in their capacity as council members, but support the initiative as an avenue of communication between residents and the quarry site operators. Moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any conversation that we want to have with respect to this? And if not, I can make it down.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is based on because of litigation that's passed council that what's going on.
It, it's not necessarily based on that. I think we did have correspondence very similar to this prior to the litigation, if I'm not mistaken.
Through your worship, this, this request had previously come before council had made a decision on whether or not to approve the application and council passed a very similar motion at that time, at this time, as there is an open appeal before the OLT staff recommendation is that it may not be ideal for council to participate in this initiative as council members, but that it is a good idea for communication with residents about the quarry operations that are happening.
Yeah, okay. And, and, and just to add to it, I have, I have to agree as long as there's something that's outstanding. I, I think it's a worthwhile cause. Anytime we have an opportunity to liaison with the public, I, I think it's a good thing, but I just don't. I think it's a little preemptive at this point. I think we'll have all kinds of opportunity further on down the road that, that if we want to do this, we can. I just think it might be a little preemptive at this point. So. Is there anything that come out of that? Okay, we'll call the vote, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. 6.2.2 S&amp;J Wees Tax Penalty Forgiveness Request. We have a recommendation that council received for information, the tax penalty forgiveness request from Stephen and Jennifer Wees. And further, that council upheld the decision of staff respectfully declining the request for penalties to be waived on the grounds that the town's practice has historically been that penalty waivers will be considered when there has been an administrative error on the town's part. What we'll look for a motion, put on the floor, we'll have some conversation, we'll see where it goes. So unless we want to have some conversations and, but that's the staff recommendation that we have. So. Moved by Counselor.
What, what, sorry, I thought you were going to ask for.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think maybe what we'll do is, well, let's put the motion on the floor. We'll move it second and then we'll have some conversation, whether it motion passes or not, I don't know. But then we can always follow up with another motion if that seems to go in a different direction. So.
I'll put the motion on the floor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Now we have an opportunity to have a conversation with it. I don't know if, is there anybody from staff that can provide any more information other than what's in the report itself or, or in the email itself? I guess not. It's fairly self-explanatory, but so. Thanks, Paul. Is there any questions that Paul can answer? Is there any conversations we want to have? Thanks, Paul. Um, is there any questions that Paul can answer? Is there any conversations we wanna have? Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Yes, I it's my understanding that we do have the funds. He paid it to a different account than, there was two tax accounts. He just simply made a mistake. Said I'm, I'm paying this account instead of this account.
That's correct, and, and for the the practices that is the only, if the errors on the point of administration, that, that we get a lot of payments from people on loan. If no works, is that somebody will make a payment, and it's a file, digital file that gets thousands of files, including wells from banks or other properties, in order for us to make sure that they all go into proper, we probably have to add. So, uh, we love you, we love the illness, and I'd say we have dropped this. We put yours on resident to pick up our account, and if we make an error, we'll turn it back for it. It's similar practice to credit card companies, I know, telephone companies.
Thanks, Paul. Go ahead, Counselor.
For you, Mayor, again, I just, I just, um, wanna make a statement. Basically, I think, like, we're all human. We all make mistakes. This wasn't a mistake to try to cover up not paying taxes. It was just a human error mistake. He technically overpaid one account, didn't pay the other account, and it's just, you know, uh, this citizen has been a lifelong resident in Nappany, and, like, I know I've made mistakes at banks myself. So, my point is, I just, I don't think it sets a precedent. You may think, Paul, that I, I don't know if it sets a precedent. I mean, it depends on, from my opinion, it depends on whether the person had intent to evade it or not. I don't think he did. So.
Why I made that statement, I said, I'm gonna learn from that, and I'm gonna make sure I pay attention next time, just like many other, many, many of.
Okay.
As I said, I, I made the same statement.
Thanks for that answer. Makes sense.
Sorry, I probably, uh, I probably should have asked you or probably Jennifer. Or we call the vote, sure.
I have no idea. I'm new to this. I have no idea. It was just brought to our attention.
We all are.
We were on the agenda, so, uh, we didn't even know we were on the agenda at this point. So, I'm fairly unprepared, but.
Yeah, come on up, come up, and, and you know what? We're, we're gonna listen to you, Jennifer.
Well, I, my, I guess my point or my, yes, it was, it was a simple error. We're property owners and have been for twenty-five years, as many people are. Don't get me wrong. Um, and I, I, I think there's many, obviously many points that I'd like to bring, and, and while I understand your point, we also didn't get a notification, or the other property did not get a notification that we, that we had overpaid. Hence, and our payment was in June, and the notification was not provided to us until November. While I understand it was my error, our error, I, I think, I guess my point would be there's many forgiveness programs within towns. And while I understand if there are frequent offenders, shall we say, um, absolutely. It's a huge amount of administrative, uh, work, but at the same point, if you're not a frequent offender, that would be part of, part of my, our, our point with respect to this. A, anyways, that's.
No, thanks, Jennifer. Did we have any questions to Jennifer? Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
I have just a comment, no question.
Oh, okay. No, if, uh, we don't have any questions. Thanks, Jennifer. We appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Yes, I'm, I know we don't have a hard policy on this, but practices in the past, but I'm, I'm looking at a long-term resident who's acting in good faith and made an error. The amount of money what I saw on the report is so little. I think we should just say, no, they don't have to pay it. An error happened. They won't do it again. But we're talking long-term residents who are acting in good faith. So, I'm opposed to hitting them for that few dollars that want.
Thanks, Counselor Norrie. Is there any other comments? What we can do is we'll call the question, and if there's another resolution that's out there, I, I think the Wees's are probably looking for some kind of closure on this. I'm thinking by tonight, but you have some.
If, if, if I may, your worship, we do not have a formal forgiveness program. I understand the amount is small. I don't think there's a burning platform right now, but I would like to do, deal with this on a broader issue if this council wants to get into sit on a policy decision, not on an ad hoc basis.
Currently, we are the, the appeal process, I guess, at this point, right? There is no policy.
There is no policy. So I think we could probably tighten this up with a policy and a process around how we do. It would potentially alleviate any kind of slippery slope in terms of the way that we make these, I'd offer that just as advice.
Yeah, Counselor Shank, go ahead.
Well, after, after listening to all parties, we have a policy in public utilities, you know, for sewer, for exemption on that. So I totally understand what John is saying also, but I, I concur with, uh, Counselor Norrie, Counselor Martin, it was a one-off. They've, they have paid, they have been in good standing. So, and it's a small amount, but I agree also, but I will make another motion. This gets done, but at the same token, I agree with John going ahead, having up with a policy in place that not all of a sudden the floods open and people start paying different ones to avoid taxes or whatever it might be. You know what I mean? So I understand John's concern also.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Shank. Yeah. Are you, are you going to be looking for a motion at some point, Mr. Vincent, or is the instruction that we're hearing should be good enough?
I would turn to the clerk, your worship, who's much better at this than I am in terms of the legislative process. That for putting on spot.
It's only fair.
Through your worship, but there, there is a motion on the floor. The, the tone of the room does seem to indicate that it will be defeated. If it is, I would suggest a new motion be proposed both to address whatever council wishes to do with this specific file, and as per the C E O's suggestion, that staff should be directed by motion to come up with a policy to fairly address similar requests in the future.
Sounds pretty reasonable to me. Thank you, Jessica. So let's deal with the motion on the floor. Obviously, the motion on the floor is to uphold the staff decision and respectfully decline. We'll call the, the vote. All in favor? Declined or opposed, sorry? The motion has been defeated. I'd be willing to accept a motion if somebody wants to make a motion with respect to what basically Jessica just said. And, and I thank you very much, Jessica.
I'm gonna put on the screen.
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, I, I, I think we all know what, what, what we, I think we got an idea that, uh, there will be forgiveness given, and that will instruct the staff to, to come up with a policy so we don't get into this mess again. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calvert. I'm thinking that you may have what you need, Jessica. Any further comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. Six point two point three, proclamation, World Thinking Day, February twenty twenty, twenty, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there's a staff recommendation, whereas the World Thinking Day has united girl guides and girl scouts around the world for a day of international friendship over the past ninety years, first celebrated nineteen twenty-six, whereas youth members in the town of Greater Nappany and beyond benefit from the opportunity to speak out on issues that affect girls and young women, celebrate the founding of Girl Guides and to be connected to the ten million members in the fifty countries who are part of the guiding movement, and whereas this year, members will be challenged to explore what we can learn from the environment and how we can work with nature to create more peaceful, secure future for youth everywhere in the theme of our world, our peace for peaceful future. Therefore, the town of Greater Nappany do hereby proclaim February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, World of Thinking Day. We'll look for a motion to move that. Counselor Hicks, Counselor Penel, is there any comments or questions with respect to that motion? Anybody wanna say anything about it?
All right, sorry, we're just having a little sidebar here.
He was having a
best cookies around.
And, and I will agree one hundred percent, Counselor Shank. So, I, I mean, the girl guides and, 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 uh, the girl scouts, I mean, I think that's an important part of, of growth of, of, of girls in our community as well as other communities, and I think it's a well-worth cause. I think the least we can do is, uh, proclaim February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as World Thinking Day. So, uh, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business tonight, Jessica. Perfect. Moving on, activity reports. Eight point one, activity report, emergency services, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That would be Bill, do you have any further information on that? Would you like to, uh, comment on it?
No.
Is there any questions or comments with respect to the report from the chief?
Move to receive, Doris.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chief, I was looking at the photos, and I saw that when you did the D P Rail, the, the disaster training.
Correct.
Was Drainall a part of that?
So, uh, absolutely. So, they're now G F L, but yes, Drainall was, uh, one of the major supporters.
Okay.
Correct. Uh, C P Rail was the sponsor, um, and then the rest of the host departments were brought in from.
Recognized the trailer from our tour.
It's correct.
Any other questions or comments? No, and what we'll do, I think, is we'll do all the staff reports at once, then we'll do them again. So, eight point two, infrastructure services for January twenty twenty-three. That would be who, is there anybody who wants to speak to that, or Christie? That's fair, fair enough. Is there any questions that Christie with respect to the infrastructure services report? Deputy Mayor Calvert, go ahead.
I'm just looking at the, uh, I guess we're my concern is, I guess, I've had a few residents call me, uh, about grading roads in January. Is that, is that a normal practice?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you would.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you through your worship. Just a comment, if you live on Barham milk Falls Road, I'd wanna see that grader every week. So, in the wintertime, yes.
Thank you. Take it when you can get it.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, eight point three, community and corporate services activity report. That would be Brant. Is there anything to add to that, Brant? Is there any questions or comments with respect to Brant's report? That's, yeah, wait, Counselor Shank.
The one thing I would, I, I would like to see in other reports is because I don't wanna fall behind on any grants, all right? You know, the capital improvements that we need in some of the, without the buildings that we have and other things that basically, we have an idea of what we're going for. So I'd like to have a report of what grants are out there, you know what I mean? Just add it to this report, so we don't, don't have anything missed. And then you can keep us informed and saying, hey, there's an opportunity for this, but it's a seventy-thirty split or a fifty-fifty split or whatever. Just so we're ahead of the curve instead of trying to, trying to always catch up. So that was one thing I'd like to see in that.
Yep, great, thanks. Uh, thanks, Mike. I think that's probably going to be duly noted. Is there anything else for, anything else for Brant? Seeing nothing, uh, legislative services for January twenty twenty-three, and that would be you, I think, Jessica. Anything like that, or, or highlight, or?
Through your worship, nothing to add, but I can take questions.
Is there any questions for Jessica with respect to legislative services? Seeing none, uh, eight point five, activity report with respect to growth and expansion for January of twenty twenty-three, and I believe that would be yours, would it, Michael?
Your worship, nothing to add. I did just wanna highlight, um, prior to Christmas, uh, I did a presentation on, uh, Bill one oh nine and Bill twenty-three's impacts to the, to the municipality. I did just wanna note that Bill one oh nine appears to be, uh, being delayed in its implementation from January first to July uh, of this year. So we've got a little bit more breathing room. Minister Steve Clark is, uh, committed to municipalities that he's gonna, uh, table legislation to delay that implementation. So, the, um, the refund provisions of Bill one oh nine will be delayed a little bit. Give us a little bit of breathing room.
Okay, that's good news. So, uh, is there any other questions of Michael? Okay, seeing none, we'll look for a, uh, motion to note and receive the activity reports, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, eight point four, eight point five, the activity reports that we've just, uh, heard. Moved by Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any further comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Staff reports, growth and expansion, Etura Power Energy Storage Project request for municipal support, and I think Michael's gonna speak to that. And just so everybody's aware, I believe we do have a representative from Etura in the, uh, in the council chambers, which is Mr. Kite, Brad Kite? Fletcher, sorry. Tom Fletcher, sorry. Yeah, that was my second choice. Sorry about that, Tom. Oh, sorry, Brad's on the screen. Yeah, I, I, I knew we were gonna hear from Brad at some point if we needed to. So, uh, go ahead, Michael, and, uh, lead away.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Um, at the previous meeting of council, um, the representatives from Etura Power, uh, provided a, an overview of the project, which entailed battery storage for, um, supplementing the grid during on-peak times to, uh, reduce, reduce consumption, reduce brownouts and, and blackout situations. Staff have reviewed the site planning, uh, that the proponents have provided, uh, and we're confident that given the scale of the proposal, the loca- the proposed location and buffering and screening that is planned to be incorporated will, will really maximize, um, any potential negative adverse impacts from a, from a visual and then any perspective from neighboring lands and from, uh, views from Highway thirty-three. So ultimately, staff are supportive of the request for the, for, for council to pass a supportive resolution. One additional item that staff would note is that, um, there is currently a development agreement registered on title to the lambs where back when the severance was approved to create this parcel on which Etura Power, uh, presently exists, there was a large area that was to be used for parking and lay down for construction staging. The development agreement, uh, essentially required the remediation of those lands for agricultural use following, uh, the commissioning of the plant. That was followed through with, with an amendment, uh, where the, the aggregate was, was agreed to be able to be left in place as long as, you know, there was additional overburden placed over top and, you know, essentially make it a, more of a pasture land or, or a meadow. The, the, the location that the battery storage facility is proposed to be located is entirely on this, on, on that portion of the property. So since there, since there's now a, a, a contemplated and proposed use, staff would be supportive of amending that development agreement to allow this use, uh, and to remove those restrictions that were previously imposed. Yeah, I believe the intent back in twenty twelve, uh, when that request, uh, of the committee of adjustment was imposed to reinstate those lands for agricultural uses because there was no contemplated development of those lands at that time. Um, and there was no, uh, um, you know, immediate plan for development of that, and, and the intent was to put it back to what its use was previous to, um, when the, the parking area was constructed. But now, since, since there's a use, there's a proposal, uh, staff are supportive of that request. The lands are industrial, uh, they're designated industrial in the official plan, and they're zoned as such in our zoning bylaws. So, um, with that, I'd be open to taking any questions that council might have.
Great, thanks, Mike. Is there any questions for council? Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship, through you, Michael. Just, uh, for clarification, then we won't be doing any amendments until we know that Etura has this contract that they've been awarded it.
Uh, that, that's correct. I mean, we, we would like to get, um, just for, 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 um, I guess efficiencies, we'd like to get council's blessing to make that amendment, but the actual execution of that would be linked to, uh, when we have an approved site plan. We, we've got a concept plan, but we don't have a detailed site plan. when we have an approved site plan. We've got a concept plan, but we don't have a detailed site plan. And the proponents aren't yet aware if they're, if they're going to be successful in the proposal or not. So until we get confirmation of that, we're going to, we plan to leave that development agreement on title. And then at such time down the road, you know, a year or two from now, then we can, you know, make those amendments as needed.
Okay. And so that will definitely come back to us again at that time.
At that time, yeah.
Okay, great. And just one more question. Thank you, your worship. Through you, back to the chief again. It's been a few, a little while since we've talked about this. I just want to make sure that you're still okay with this project and that a fire can take care of this.
Through your worship, absolutely. Since the last meeting and since the two deputations that we've seen, we've reached out to our neighbors and there's already a few of these smaller sites in Loyalist Township. And us and our counterparts have no problems or foresee limited issues with both the build, storage and operation of the site.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Council Shank?
Mike, where, did you get a report of any of the contact of this Atura contacting any of the landlords adjacent to the, to the east of them? Did they have any concern?
Through worship, I didn't get any specific report from Atura, but I believe they did have conversations with landowners. I'll, I'll defer to Atura if they can provide comment to that effect.
Yeah, I can say we, we did host a meeting with it, with, that was attended by several adjacent landowners. We do also, we have a project website where we also posted the minutes of that meeting. So that's, that's up live now. We can share that link.
What was your concern? Did they have any concerns with your, I'm sorry?
Yep, go ahead, Mike. Sorry.
Do they have any concerns with your proposals here?
Yeah. So I think we, we definitely heard a desire to see, you know, a significant level of consultation. So, you know, a lot, a lot of involvement of local residents as we, you know, further develop the plans for the facility. Did also hear an, an interest in seeing, you know, a strong level of screening being put in place so that this wasn't, you know, invisible or, or an eyesore as well. And definitely, you know, indicated that it's, that, that certainly is our, is our intent.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mike. Go ahead.
So they, so they, they were in favor of it, you're saying, but they had concerns about, you know, that they didn't want to basically see it. Is that what I'm understanding what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I you know, we, we certainly, we didn't pass a vote to, to say if, if everybody was in favor. There were certainly some people that did come out and very much strongly said that they supported this. Other, other people, you know, just, just more indicated that, you know, they really wanted to make sure they were, they were involved in consultation. And that, you know, that this is designed in a way that it would minimize any impacts to them.
I have one other question.
Yep.
Like, since I lived in the neck of the, that neck of the woods, wasn't all the aggregate taken out of that one field where there was the parking lot? Because there was a lot of B and A that they had put in there. Didn't a lot, wasn't that a lot of that sold and moved?
Some of it, through worship, some of it was a ball, the bulk of it remained in place though.
Okay.
So it's, it's below, you know, it's hidden from view now per se, but it's, it's still on the land.
Piles of, I'm sorry, the piles of soil that they had in the sub, you know, subsoil that they had, the big pile they had moved that. Yeah. I saw tons of trucks leaving there with the aggregate, but all right.
Thanks, Council Shank. Is there any other questions? And now that we have Brad and Tom, is there any questions of Brad and Tom that council has? Yeah, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how many acres of land is, are these battery storages going to take up?
Yeah. So the, the, the total site footprint is roughly fifteen acres. And we would contemplate developing that in two stages. So that the first stage would be a smaller build out that would be awarded through, through this round of the procurement. And then we would look to have a second phase that would be, that we would look to, to, to bid into the later phase of the procurement.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Council Hicks, go ahead.
Through your worship, Mike, do we have any idea when MPAC is going to come back with assessment numbers?
Through your worship, our district manager was hopeful that we would have an answer for this meeting. However, it, it has gone to their council for review. So we don't, they don't, unfortunately, they don't have a, a date that will have an answer as to how these will be assessed. So I don't have an answer unfortunately at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, worship. Through you, Brad, could you give us the website where we can see these concerns from citizens?
Yes, certainly. How would you like me to send that?
If you could send that to the clerk, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, yes, we'll do.
Thank, thank you very much.
Either, either to the clerk or maybe through Michael would probably be the, I'm sure you've had other conversations with Michael. So either or, whatever is easiest for us. So.
Yes, we will do that. Yep.
Council Shank, go ahead.
I only have one final concern is that I know that I was on when the berms were replaced. As long as the neighbors to the east cannot see and that, you know, due diligence is done that what the berms were put in place. Right. The trees that are planted, they fashion, all right, to obstruct you of what you're proposing here. Because if I was living there and I saw how much, you know, how many sea cans that you're going to be sitting there, you know, and I'm already on the west side. We're, you know, on the east side of you, I'm getting the westerly winds, you know, to begin with. Like, we have to be cognizant of basically what the concerns are.
Okay, thanks, Council Shank. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, we have a recommendation that council received for information, the growth and expansion of Atura Power Energy Storage Project request for municipal support resolution report. And further, that council passed the support resolution identified as exhibit a form of municipal support resolution included with the agenda package. And further, that council authorized the mayor and the clerk to execute, execute an amendment to the twenty fourteen Development Agreement as amended in twenty nineteen to permit the installation of the energy storage facility on the lands formerly used for agricultural purposes identified as temporary use lands within the twenty fourteen Development Agreement. We'll look for a motion to Council Pinnell, Council Hicks, is there any other further questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you both, Brad and Tom, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine point two, community and corporate services downtown core area report. And thank you very much. Did you want to start?
Through your worship, I have nothing more to add to the report at this time, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks, Annie. This conversation, I think, is, is going to go in a whole bunch of different ways. What we're going to try and do is try and separate things as best we can and, and come up with some form of a resolution. There's a staff recommendation that staff is looking for some direction on this. So I guess what we'll do is that everybody's got the report in front of them is, where do we want to start? Is anyone who wants to start with any questions of Annie or any comments with respect to the report? Counselor Martin?
Are we going to stick just to this reporter to the amendment that Jessica sent? Late today? Like, is that all part of it? It wasn't really an amendment, I guess, because it was I got something like quarter to five about this. Are we sticking right to this?
Well, let Jessica speak to it. I'm not a hundred percent. I think I know it. It's an email we got related late. Go ahead, Jessica.
So through, through your worship, an, an email was sent out to council fairly late today. One of the options included in that email is, is some wording for a resolution. If you wanted to follow section two ten of the municipal act and start down that road of putting a BIA back in place, step one being mandatory public notice sixty day window. If one third or more of the assessed property owners or value of owners representing one third or more of the assessed taxpaying value of the BIA levy say, no, we do not want this. That is a definitive answer. This cannot be put in place. On the flip side of that, if you don't get that and you get a pretty, that two thirds mandate that people do want it, that is also some more conclusive data that, that council could pull on. So that's part of what that report was, was just some options for wording. If you want to go down that road tonight and, and start that ball rolling. I, I did note in there that as, as Rennie alluded to in her deputation, timing would be very tight to get anything done in twenty twenty-three, even if you started that now, even if we had started it in December. The staff recommendation in this report is an advisory committee for this year to manage things. But the second page of that note that went out to council was just a little bit more details on some comments in this report about the VAB Quinney marketing dollars and costs that does not need to be, I realized you got that very late. That was just if there was a burning desire to pass a resolution tonight.
Counselor Pinnell?
Through your worship, thank you. You know, we, we sit here, we listen to, to everybody that came out. Thank you very much at the SBC. And I thank everybody who comes out tonight, gives his deputations. But I think we need to start somewhere. And I, I, I think there was a comment made tonight that makes a lot of sense. And we need to figure out who's in, who's out, who wants this and who doesn't. So we really need to contact the assessed people to see, do they want a BIA or not? Because who are we to say, here, you're having a BIA when they don't want it? So I think that's the first. Unless I'm totally off base here, but start.
Counselor Martin?
There's a number of things involved here. Like, there's the actual designated area itself. What are we going to use as a BIA area if we're going to reinstate the BIA? I mean, I think you need to ask all the questions, not just, do you want a BIA or don't you want a BIA? I think and like, as far as the beautification and the, and the downtown area, I mean, all of Napanee benefits by what we do downtown. And you know, we were talking about even the, the, the big bright light show possibly using those lights in Conservation Park and Spring Site Park at the last council meeting. And that's not a designated BIA area. So, I mean, I, I think rather than just say, do you want a BIA or don't you want a BIA? We have to say what we're, what the BIA is. I mean, what do they want within the BIA? Are we going to have a designated area that includes all of Napanee? Because we have not just south of the tracks, we have north of the tracks. Even the flowers that we put, that we charge the BIA, sometimes we, we have flowers on the bridge at Dundas Street, Highway two, we have flowers on Center Street Bridge. I mean, is that the BIA's responsibility? I mean, we have to, we have to actually have a conversation about what the BIA is going to be. I mean, there's, and, and the other thing is, is you say, ask. We want to make sure that we contact everybody. I, I think Rennie said tonight she had, what, in twenty twenty-two, they wanted to reinstate the BIA and, and but I was talking today with several people, they were not even contacted about the meeting at SBC. Or they didn't get it. I'm not, whatever. So somehow we have to have possibly a membership list from the last BIA. We have to have, I mean, do we want to only ask the people who were in the BIA the last time? Or do we want to expand it into all of Greater Napanee? I mean, Michael has apple orchards out there. We have breweries. We have Santini's even across the ridge. I mean, there's, there's many here. We have a lot of businesses out north of the tracks. I mean, are we not all Greater Napanee? I mean, I mean, we got it. We got to define what we're asking them is what I'm saying. Like, we can't just say, do you want it or not want it? They have to know what we're giving them within those parameters. So I think we need to do something about that.
Thanks, Council Pinnell, and then we'll go to council.
Sorry about ranting on the mayor.
That's, that's why we're here, Bill. That's, we're here to try and sort this out. So.
I appreciate that, just to kind of squeeze in there because I just want to rebuttal on, on that. You know, I, I believe it would be easy to, to reach out because if we send out a levy, we have obviously the names and the address we had. So there is a list somewhere. We just need to print it for the existing BIA, for the BIA that did exist. And I believe that what my comment was, was to reach out to them. We have twenty some odd people on, on here. And that's not nearly, as we heard from Mr. Lucas, that's not nearly the amount of people that are being assessed. So that's what I mean. We need to get out there and at least approach those. You were saying that you're talking to a lot of people that weren't approached or didn't know about the meeting?
Yes.
This is where we start, right? Let's send them out there. We'll, we'll tell them that we're, we're talking about this and we're thinking about resurrecting a BIA. We'll have to pick a defined area. I agree with you, the defined area is a little bit bigger than what it was when, back when this was, was, was put into place. But I don't believe that it would behoove us to, to make it the whole of Greater Napanee. But that's a discussion other than where I was going with the story right now is just simply, I do believe we can easily have a list. We can send out notifications, letters to them and go from there. And then we'll see, we're back to the one third. If one third says no, then it's a moot point to go any further.
Counselor Hicks?
Through your worship. So just so that my understanding is correct, BIA is not a Business Improvement Association. It is a Business Improvement Area, correct? Defined very strictly, south of, north of, east of, west of, contained within that. Currently, it does not extend to Santorini's, the golf course, spring meadow orchards, wind farms. Where, but I'm just saying, whatever. Well, Bill mentioned the apple orchard.
No, you're correct. We do have some hard set boundaries. I'm mistaken. We have hard set boundaries with respect to what is, where the BA is and where it is.
And the priority right here, right now, is beautification. Fifty percent of a BIA's budget is towards beautification. Correct? Forty percent, forty percent goes to marketing and ten percent goes to administration. So the number I saw, I almost fell off my chair. Sorry. Sixty thousand dollars for the beautification of the current geographical area of the BIA. I just, I can't, I just can't wrap my head around that. I know that planters are expensive, but sixty thousand dollars because we're in budget. Discussions right now, this is something that has to be, I think, top priority. Because I know if they're not ordered, then we don't get them. And as someone said to me today, we need the flowers hanging and looking beautiful May twenty-fourth, not July first.
I think, I think Mr. Pinson wants to respond.
If I may, through your worship to Council Hicks. So we, we've been around this boy several times in terms of beautification. So let, let's be clear. I would classify that you have three options with beautification. Historically, it was volunteers with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brad or Annie, volunteers, they purchased the plants. It was around twenty thousand dollars, somewhere around that area. So there's your twenty thousand dollar lease cost option. I think the volunteers, the people are willing to help, but have disappeared. Your second option would be for us to hire students to do something like that. We recognized last year that as students leave in September, we have no further help. They're all baskets. Weather gets warm, your baskets die. So what we looked at as an option that is the easiest option is to contract of this service, fire and forget it's done. You contract out to a firm. Believe it or not, there's probably on a one or two firms that want to do that work here in Napanee. Some of them do not want to do that work. So we use sixty thousand dollars. We've gone out through emails. We've documented the process. It's around sixty thousand dollars. So that's kind of where we are in terms of prices and why we've gone that way.
Thanks, John. I'm going to, go ahead, Council Shank, and then I, then I'll weigh in on what my thoughts.
Now, so everybody's shooting me. We have to follow the municipal act. I agree with everybody who said it. And at the SBC, there was a large contingent. And at the SBC, there was a large contingent that didn't want it, and there was a large contingent that did want it. But I agree with the option one is, let's go through the municipal act first. And I, everybody, believe it or not, I agree with Sean that it should be, you know, expanded. But we have to start somewhere because when the, when the machine is broken, we got to get the engine running first. So let's get the BIA. I would like to see the BIA going because. In two thousand nineteen, I think I read somewhere, I was trying to find it, was seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars that they did for beautification. All right, but if you have the volunteers and you have the BIA, all right, that are going to paying because I totally believe no taxation without representation. And if they're getting taxed for it, they're going to have their heart and soul into it. They're the ones that do all the ninety percent of the stuff. All right, but at least that'll get going. Then we have to look into what Sean has stated and what other people have stated that, you know, there might be other businesses in the areas, but you know, at the same time. You can't expect, I remember when there was an automotive shop downtown and he was in that area, BIA, and he was getting taxed for it, and what are they doing for? So he didn't want to be any part of it. So I understand some people wanting it, some people don't want it. But to begin with, we have to find out and go through the, through the municipal act and put it out there. How many people want it? How many people don't? Then we have to, we have to go from their old, uh, you know, what they're saying, because soon as if they say the, yeah, they're into it. All right, and they're getting taxed onto it. I don't want to go ahead and spend sixty thousand dollars on flowers, which is totally astronomical. All right, and contracted out and have a higher cost because it all comes from the taxpayer. But if you can go ahead and say, hey, we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars or whatever, and and find out in the meantime. What is, what they really want for flowers and what the town wants for flowers. And at the same time, here's another thing I would like to see is Annie or somebody. Talk to all who has a list of all the individuals and go down and talk to every single one of them. So nobody can say, because I would be, if I was a business owner of the downtown. And I was missed because I was busy or I was on holidays and I came back and all of a sudden here's another tax bill. You know, I get, I would be choked also. So when they were saying the lack of communication, that's number one, it's got to be fixed. And I would start the process of restarting the the BIA, finding out with that vote to begin with. How many want it and how many don't? As Sean said, there was a hundred and twenty some, and at the same time, there is twenty-two. So let's go down that, but at least we have something to go by because we can go around and around and around circle all day for the next ten years. Because some people do and some people don't.
Could I propose this? So there are a hundred and three, if tax records are right, there's a hundred and three distinct businesses. There may be about seventy owners because you have multiple, several multiples in here. Several of these business owners do not live in Napanee, that we only have mailing addresses. I would prefer not to send a staff member out knocking on doors because quite frankly, honestly, the relationship between some of staff and some of business owners is not good.
Okay.
For what it's worth, okay? Toxic in some cases. We have addresses, we can send out letters and we can do the formal process that way. I would prefer to do it that way and not have staff involved.
I. Sorry, I, and I'll come up, I'm going to round, trying to do this all together, but I want to try and hear everybody first. So did, did you want to go or do you want me to go, Brian, or? Yeah, okay, well, okay, let me, let me say my piece and then, and then.
Can I say one more thing?
Go ahead, Bill, yeah.
I, I. I, I still have an issue with. What the, even the old, if you take the old BIA, I still have an issue with. Why do we, why are they responsible for the purchase of the flower, the cost of the flowers? I benefit as a residential person, people everywhere in Napanee benefits from looking at the flowers downtown. I, I'm not saying that. It's not nice, it's wonderful to have them down there. And the other thing is, we're not going to be able to reinstate the BIA this year. It's my understanding that it's going to take three months after we decide. I, maybe Jessica can relate to that, but I think, I think that was the the timeframe. If we decided today we were going to have a reinstate the BIA, it was going to take three months to.
Through your worship, yes, approximately, because we would have to, if we, we have to write the letters, we have to mail the letters, we have to give. Sufficient time to assume they've been received, we have to give sixty days for a response. And then we have to review that response and bring it to council and have it fall on a scheduled council meeting date. So that's sort of where the, the three months timeline comes from.
Can I?
Yep.
Keep going?
Keep going, but I I'm going to, I'm going to weigh in here shortly.
Yeah, okay. I'll let you go in here to second. My point is, like, we have to order the flowers, so how, are we going to make a motion then that we, uh? The town council, uh, by committee runs the, runs the uh, summer activities for now or for this year?
That's going to be the conversation that I I'm going to have here right smartly, so.
Can, can we also debate or or vote on whether who's paying for it? Whether it's on the backs of the downtown merchants or it's on Greater Napanee in the, in a general taxation.
We are here to fix this thing, Bill, so we can sit and talk about it all night. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you my opinion.
Yeah, go for it.
The BIA is highly regulated by the municipal act. The BIA, there are rules and regulations to, in order to establish a BIA, you have to follow certain rules and regulations. It, it's very plain and simple, and and it's a wonderful piece of legislature because it it takes a lot of decision-making out of our process. So. So what has to happen, if you want to establish a BIA, you have to send letters out to your property owners. The property owners are going to. Get these letters. They have to identify, it's all, it's all hinge on who is paying taxes. You get a vote if you're paying taxes. And so if you're a property owner, you get a vote. If you are a. Leasee or or a person that runs a store there, if part of your lease says that you're paying taxes, you get a vote. And so those people all have to be identified. So the municipal act says or suggests that. In order to establish a BIA, letters have to be sent out to your property owners first. It's, it's the onus is on your property owners to to identify. The people that they have as leases that are paying property taxes. So now we have our base. In order to establish a BIA, and and if I'm wrong, I'm hoping somebody's going to change me, but this is all the research that I've been talking to a number of people. It's contingent on, once we get all those letters out, we've identified all the people that are part of the BIA organization or or the area. One, if if the vote is one-third to say no, it's over, we can't establish it. However, if the vote is less than one-third to say no, it comes back to council with the opportunity. To establish a BIA. It doesn't say you must, it says that you may. And and these are the very, very basic initial steps that have to happen. And and so to 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 Dave's point and to the points that we've heard here so far, we have to talk to these people. We're, we're, we're going to talk to them, we're going to get a letter in the mail, and we're going to identify who the property owners are. And who the the leases of the properties are paying taxes are, because those are people that are part of the BIA. And and this is all dictated and legislated by the municipal act, and and it's, it's wonderful, it really is, because it tells us how to do it. And so if it's going to tell us how to do it, maybe we should take advantage of it, because that's the way this game is going to be played. So we send the letters out and 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 we get, we establish what has to happen. Now, in order to send the letters out and do this, we have to. Make a motion, have a resolution that we want to institute a BIA. That's the starting point. Will that happen? We don't know until we get the letters back, until the votes come in and we say, hey. If 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 one-third of the vote says no, it's over. But if less than one-third of the vote says no. We have the option of doing that. And that's where I think we can reach out to everybody. Establish who's in and who's out without going around in circles and round in circles and round in circles. And is dictated to us by the municipal act. What's going to have to happen after that is that we will establish whether or not we want to set up a BIA. And and we've got a lot of work ahead of us. I mean, and so the time periods that Jessica's talking about was we have thirty days to send the letters out, we have another thirty days to get the letter back. And then we have to coordinate it with council meetings. So this isn't going to be a quick fix by any stretch of the imagination, but we are going to do it. If this is the way council wants to go, we are going to do it in can. In cooperation or in conjunction with the municipal act, which is the dictating piece of legislature in the province of material that tells us how to do stuff. In my world, coming from the world that I come from, I I think it's a good piece of legislature, I think we need to follow it. Because it's going to guide us through this, right? We're going to have to make some tough decisions when we get those letters back and when we get the votes back as to whether or not we don't have a BIA. And then we're going to have to make some decisions with respect to how we're going to run it, and that'll be on us, that'll be on council, and and we can do that. But that also puts us into position is is we have some time sensitive things that are going on. We need to have flowers, we need to have some decisions made. Um, which I think is going to fall into the next part of our conversation is that there's an indication or there's a, there seems to be a will or a process that we can. Formulate a committee involving a lot of the downtown or or certain sections of the downtown. Shouldn't say a lot of the downtown, but sections of the town, town, along with staff members, along with council members. To get us through until we have made the decision of whether we can form the BIA or not. And that's, and and because we need to do that, because that's what's going to have to take the time. So um, that will come up a little later when we talk about. Committees. Um, and and we can talk about it now if you want, but I really think that what we need to do is follow the act, follow what the act says. We put the question out there, we have people that are in the BIA committed to whether or not they want to be in the BIA or not. And 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 it's a democratic process, we let, we let the cars fall as they may, and because that's the process, that's the system that we have, and that's what we need to follow, so. Um, I hope I haven't rambled on too much. Um, that's where I'm coming from, but the counselor now may have different views.
Uh, through your worship, no, I don't have a different view, I just want to throw a wrench into everything that you just said, is that um. When we send these letters out, are we going to be sending them out to what was the BIA? Or is this the time now where we look at boundaries? Because if we get, we, if we open it up and have a larger boundary, then that affects the one-third.
Very much so. I I I like the Counselor Shank's way of looking at it and the fact that we have some boundaries established now. Let's get the thing running first, and then if we decide that we want to expand upon it, or we decide that people also also want to get involved into it. We can do that, but I think it's paramount that if this is going to happen, we need to get the engine running first. And 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 I like, I like Counselor Shank's analogy with respect to that. If not. We can bounce this thing around forever and ever and ever, and we're never ever going to get it resolved, or never ever going to get it solved. But I, so I think what we need to do is hit the thing head on and say, listen. Do the core of what we have with respect to the previous B BIA, do we want to get involved in a BIA? And the only way to do that is to send the letters out, send the votes out and say, tell us. Because, I mean, the people in that downtown core are the ones that are going to dictate this, and I think they should, because it 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 affects them. Tell us what you want to do, and we're, we're going to come up with a way of making it work, but you have to tell us what we want to do, and it's supported by the municipal act, so. Why not take advantage of it, I guess, is my thinking on it, so. That's part A.
I'm, I'm good with that, thank you.
So we can start with part A, um, if there's any other conversation with it, but then we have to move into. What are we going to do until such time as we've made a decision whether we're going to have a BIA or we're not going to have a BIA, right? So then we get into the flowers, we get into uh, some of the decision-making, which. On a temporary basis, having a committee involving a lot of different people in the downtown areas is not a bad idea. And it may end up being a precursor that if we do go back into a BIA, maybe precursor to how we can run it, right? So, um, but we're, we're going to need this band-aid solution, I think, and at some point, and and we need it now because we've got to make some decisions. We want to make sure that our downtown's pretty, we want to make sure that the flowers are there, and and we do have some options for that, but uh, we got to get there first, so. I make a motion. Uh, if, if there's no other conversation, we can start off by making the motion if you want, which um. Is obviously Jessica's been very gracious in helping us with that.
So I I'd like to make a motion that we uh, go forward and reinstate the BIA.
Okay, and I could probably give you a bit of an assistance with that, if that's the direction, if that's the motion that you want to do, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is that council direct staff to begin the process of establishing a bylaw to designate an area in the downtown core as an improvement area. Using the same boundaries that previously existed for the downtown BIA. By issuing notices to all persons assessed for ratable property in a prescribed business property class. Located within the proposed improvement area in accordance with section two-ten of the municipal act. That sounds sort of what you wanted to say?
That is correct. I didn't realize I was supposed to read all of that out, but thank you for.
Well, I, I, and I think it's important that if if this is what we're going to do in the direction of we're going to go in, that we got to be very clear with it, so.
If we don't start, the engine will never make it to the end of the track, then they're done that.
I I think this is going to give us a very clear indication as to where we're going. Well, it has to, so. So the motion has been made by Deputy Mayor Calver, do we have a second there?
I'll second.
Counselor Hicks seconds it.
Recorded vote.
We. Counselors Shank has asked for a recorded vote. Um, is there any other conversations with respect to this specific motion? Is there any other conversations or questions or comments? Counselor Pinal.
Uh, through your mayor, thank you. I think that we, it, I would like to ask for a friendly uh, amendment to this motion to put in a timeframe. As to what would be a realistic time for these notices to be sent out, because again, it is time sensitive. I know we're gonna. This year is going to be looking a different direction, but I still would rather have this done, have a date that's going to be done by in the resolution. So it's done.
If we add in the word forthwith, will that suffice? Or do you want an actual date?
Or a timeframe or a date, or we can have staff what what they think is realistic. I just don't want to have a resolution put on the books and then we deal, we send out letters in September.
There's absolutely no way that that would happen.
So, so if if I may, through your worship to Counselor Pinal, so our next meeting is the budget meeting on the sixteenth. So if council wants to endorse the note that goes out, right, so we would have to do that and then mail them out forthwith. So you're looking at probably a third week in February.
So would you be looking for a friendly amendment with respect to the resolution? Do you want a date or do you want to have forthwith, or do you want to leave it as it is, Dave?
End of February.
And what John says would would suffice me, yes.
Because we're in the middle of sending tax bills out as well, right? So there's a lot of paper flying around right now.
So the friendly amendment would read that council direct staff by the end of February to begin the process of establishing.
We're sending.
Sending, but.
Yeah, I I'm just reading the, the, the resolution that was, that was put out there was to, that council direct staff to begin the process of establishing a bylaw. And now council plan now wants to establish, it says to begin.
She, there's also by issuing notices in the middle.
Yeah, right, right, after Deputy DIA says, by issuing notices to all persons. No, I'd like to say, by issuing notices to all persons no later than February.
And I think that that's probably covered within the act anyways, is it not, Jessica, that that upon the resolution, we have thirty days to issue the notices? Sorry, I'm not mistaken. Sorry, folks, we, we want to get this thing right and we want to make sure that we get some movement on this because we want to make sure we got it right, so.
Through your worship, the act does not speak to the timing for us to mail the notices, it speaks to the timing for when the notices need to be returned back. Of comments, um, but, but as um, as the CEO has stated, we would certainly intend to do this in February.
So we can, we can add in the date, uh, February twenty-eighth, if uh, that makes you happy and and makes the resolution more complete.
It does.
Um, we can add in that date in the resolution, and is there any specific spot doing a direct staff?
I issued notices to all persons assessed uh, for reliable property in a prescribed business no later than. You know, you fit that in, into that sentence anywhere.
Located within the proposed improvement area in accordance with section. Or in, right at the end, no later than.
Just, just anywhere on there, it'll make me feel a lot better that we have a date that I can put in my book and say, hey, what's going on?
Jessica, do you have what you need? Or do you want me to, uh, well, we, we're going to have to ask for the friendly amendment from. Or do you want me to, well, we, we're going to have to ask for the friendly amendment from the mover and the second or right? So.
We, we could simply just put in. That previously existing to the downtown app need by BIA, there's a comma, no later than February twenty eighth. Issue notices to all persons could be as simple as that.
Is the mover and the second or good with that? Friendly amendment. Counselor Hicks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any other comments, questions or concerns with respect to this motion? Yep, Councilor Martin.
I'm just a little bit confused by the, are we? Are we just simply notifying everybody in the old that we're. Reimplementing the BIA or are we suggest asking them if they want the BIA or not what? Are we asking them a question? What are we doing?
Don't work. Do you want to, want to comment?
Sure.
I'm getting a little confused on the.
So through your worship, the process, we're following the process laid out in the municipal act, which is less of a survey and it's more of a. A notice that will go out that says council has proposed to do this thing. If you object, you must. Provide notice of your objection no later than sixty days. If more than one third of people object to this. Council cannot move forward with this. People can also, we will, we can add additional language in this letter, asking for comments, asking for feedback, asking for any number of things. But the, the core of it as laid out in the act is this statement that says council has proposed to do this. If you object, you must respond and file notice of your objection within sixty days with the clerk and that. Objection is binding on council if, if there's sufficient number of objections received.
So to further extrapolate on that, what I would suggest we do in the letter, we refer to the legislation and then in plain language. Interpret, there's a paragraph section here which deals with the role of the municipality and outline what that is. Probably for ease of purpose, just take a photocopy of those two pages. Say, here's what we're doing in plain language. Because it's very, very precise in terms of the processes. We don't, we don't make this up. We follow the rules.
No, I, I understand the law and I've read that, I've read the act inside note ten times ways, but. I was a little confused on what. We were asking if, if we just send it out, we get a twenty five percent response back. Are they voting for it or are they voting against it?
But there's rules in here where state, you have to state an objection, right? So what we're looking for is a certain percentage of objectors.
So I'm saying if we don't get, if they just don't object, then, then therefore that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's right in the municipal act itself. The municipal act is dictating how we're going to do this. So.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, where were we? We, was there any other questions or comments? And I think Counselor Shank was looking for a recorded vote with respect to this motion. Any other comments or questions, concerns? Do we involve the vote and?
All right. Start with word one, Counselor Shank.
Yes.
Or two, Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Or three, Counselor Penel.
Yes.
Word four, Counselor Norrie.
Yes.
Word five, Counselor Martin. Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
Just so, I, I'm sorry, you don't have to, because we're all discussing the BIA now. I have another question that I'd like to propose is that. In our budget, you know, I mean, we understand sixty thousand dollars to hire it down, especially the budget constraints that we have this year. All right. That we definitely try to get a summer student. All right. And we're going to see if we can fill somebody to water the flowers after September. But somebody that will go ahead and. I don't know where they purchased the flowers the last time. Of course, I always shop low, probably as long as the quality is the same. I don't lock your gardens over in Picton. I do a lot of business because they grow a lot of vegetables for me or start them as small plants. But the point is that we start the beautification now. All right. And that we get something, you know, get, find out, talk to the people from the downtown, what they did in the past, what our history is. You know what I mean? The last budget that I saw was seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. So was that all flowers? I don't know. I wasn't part of the BIA. But, and then we get a summer student to go ahead, water to look after, to weed them and to do fertilize, to do everything else. At least we can get that rolling now. All right. So I'll make the motion that we go ahead and instruct staff to go ahead and. Go ahead, find, get that research done. So, and get that summer student, get all the paperwork to go and, and go from there. Yeah, but not at sixty grand. You know what I mean? Like from seventeen thousand eight hundred, let's say twenty thousand dollars. But you have to put it in the budget now. So we go through budget deliberations because the BIA is not going to exist. All right, this year. So you can't, we can't, and. Another motion, one of the question, one of, here, I'm just throwing this up to you, Mayor, is that, and caress the council is. At SBC, there was a lot of individuals, a lot of business owners that would like to see, all right. Basically of what, how their money was spent last year. You know what I mean? Where it went is we're going to get a refund and how much is actually left? And how can that, a portion of that be maybe absorbed towards the beautification of this year? But they would like to have an accounting of where their money had gone and what, and what we have left of it. I mean, that was one of their questions and we hold their tax dollars. So we have to be responsible for that. Now that was, wasn't on my watch, but.
Sorry. And I'm wondering if the conversation that we need to have next, because as I said, this is going to be a. Multifaceted type of conversation is if the conversation we need to have next is. Is there an appetite to form a downtown? Advisory committee with respect to the downtown core or the BIA. To get us through until the decisions made with respect to whether or not we're, we're reinstating the BIA. Would that be the next appropriate direction to head into?
Procedurely, can I just ask, was a motion put on the floor by Counselor Shank? I have a motion. That staff be directed to begin the process of hiring a summer student and ordering flowers for downtown beautification for twenty twenty-three. And staff be directed to report on the details of that at the next budget meeting and staff be directed to provide an accounting. On the twenty twenty-two levy at the next budget. Was that a motion that is on the floor?
I, I just, we set the seat so irregularly. So the point is, any of the questions that the rate pairs have had. In the past, I don't want that to be, you know, gone through the cracks. So the point is, is. Mr. Mayor, what you're saying is a starter, basically an advisory board now, because we have to go in some of the history of what they've done in the past. All right. So if you want to start that first, rather than have a motion like this, but it's totally up to you. You're the chair, you're the mayor. But if you want to go ahead and do that and then have an advisory, it's what you feel is.
Well. Why don't we put the motion on the floor and then we can have the conversation? But I guess that's the way the rules, the rules of engagement are supposed to happen. I, I like the, I mean, because we're, we're, we're getting. I like the fact that we have to make some decisions here and, and that's a decision. So. Why don't we put that motion on the floor? We'll get a second or we'll have a conversation with it. So Counselor Shank has made the motion. I think we all know what the motion is. Do we have a second or with respect to the motion? So we can have the conversation. Deputy Mayor Calver. So the motion's on the floor. Let's have some conversation about it, Mike. I, I think that's important. And like I say, I like the idea that we're, we're, we're moving forward or making some decisions. The time period isn't that far off. We're, we're two or three weeks down the road, right? So. Does anybody want to comment on it? We had Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, your worship. So just to get it straight, we have the availability to hire a couple of students to look after the watering of these plants, that sort of thing until September.
So through your worship to Deputy Mayor, we would have to amend our budget ask for that because they weren't anticipated. But when we come back in the sixteens, we'll make sure that we, we include those two horticultural students to do that.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'm a farmer. You need to.
Well, in our, in our world, normally when you get one, you need two because of somebody doesn't show up and it's. I'm not, I'm not going to try and pretend I understand how that happens. But if the advice is we need two students to do watering, then that's what it is.
And, and I, I don't, I don't think we're making that decision tonight. Anyways, we're asking to.
We would, we would, we would come back with recommendations in terms of what, what the labor would look like to do that.
And, and we can make that decision when we see the report, I'm thinking. So. Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, a quick question. Is it typically university students, Annie, that are hired?
Yes, through your worship to Counselor Hicks, it has been in the past. For reference, last year we had three horticultural students that allowed for weekend waterings that weren't available previous years.
Okay. So my next question would be, could we go with? One horticultural student and two high school students. Providing they're over the age of sixteen, which I think they would have to be. The reason I ask that is if they're high school students, typically they're local and they're not going back to university in September. So we would still have them. Possibly.
Through your worship, some of the grant funding and everything that we receive in order to pay for those students. Specifies college, university, young adults. One of the other things is that usually for the watering downtown, at least last year, we used a town vehicle in which they would need. A license and everything as well, which depending, yeah.
And I'm assuming too, the rule of two people is also for safety.
Yes.
Okay. We can certainly follow up with the director of HR in terms of what are the parameters around who we hire and when and why. Right. And have that wholesome discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I think we have addressed immediate concern with respect to flowers. Yes, no?
Have we?
Well, we, will we by the budget meeting, I'm hoping. Unless somebody else, I guess we should get this motion up for Thursday. Jess, we, let's try and stay organized.
Read, read it again, please. Sure. And, and you can clarify because I was just going based on what I was hearing. So feel free to amend this. This is wrong, but. I have the staff be directed to begin the process of hiring a summer student and, and ordering flowers for the downtown beautification for twenty twenty-three based on the budgets from prior years. And further, that staff be directed to provide a report to the next budget meeting with the costing details. And further, that staff be provided to be directed to provide a detailed accounting of the twenty twenty BIA levy, actual costs to the next budget meeting.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
The only thing, just I don't know how you would like to word it. It's just like. We know what's worked and what hasn't worked in the past. I've never had anything to do with the flowers of beautification of downtown, but so I don't know what type of flowers they order, what's been done, as long as you. Let's, let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's ask what has been done, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what type of flowers, number that can be in the full sun, what isn't, you know what I mean? So when you put that out there, you could put it out to the nurseries to see what your best cost us, but like to have their input. Because one of the main things that they've always said was the lack of communication. All right. So I don't want to start off saying, oh, by the way, we're going to look after your flowers, kind of have to this year, but would like to, I'd like to have their input, what type and what, where. You know, what the quantity is, you're going to need that.
But Counselor Norrie.
Yeah, just so you know, Mike, we have some very good volunteers that did excellent with flowers and ordered them locally. I could tell staff who did it. I don't want to put names out right now. If, and they did excellent job. They knew the scheduling for watering, what the student should do. And even bought their own meters to check the water in them. So. But we have some really good resources like summer in the building here right now.
All right.
So they could, like, we could probably have a conversation with staff that way to help with them deciding where and when, or they give them an avenue to go to. Just a thought.
Mr. Benson. Might I suggest we, we bring that back in the report because the issue now is who do I talk to about the organization that doesn't exist about what that organization wants for flowers?
All right.
Because there is no organization to ask. So we will to Counselor Norrie's comment, we know who people are in the community. And we will come back with what we think is the best recommendation for flowers and we'll ask council to endorse that.
All right.
Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, a question for Jessica. Should it be split into two separate motions? The accounting, the accounting.
The, and the summers and the flowers?
Yes.
Sure.
I think that those are two separate issues. There is the question of what was. What was, where is the accounting from twenty twenty? That's one thing. And the other thing is the flowers and the student.
Yes.
They do end up tying in together because if there's any residual funds left, then they can be allocated.
So through your worship, per procedure by law, a motion containing two or more distinct proposals may be divided by leave of council and councils will consider each part separately.
Okay.
We can do that for sure.
So are we going to do two separate motions and yes, or one motion?
I have divided it. So first you will vote on the flowers and then you'll vote on the accounting. Same mover and second or on both if the mover and second are okay.
Mover and second are good with that. Sure. Okay. So if there's no further conversation, we're going to vote first on the flowers. Yes? All in favor of the motion? Most motions carried. Second vote will be with respect to the. Finances or funding? No further, there's no further comments or questions. All in favor of that motion? Opposed? Carried. Okay. Now. I think at this point, we probably need, we don't need to get into whether or not we want to have a conversation with respect to the. Downtown advisory committee, because I think that conversation will come up in nine point three. Am I correct? If my memory serves me right? Or would you rather have that conversation now? Yes.
Through your worship, that conversation, there is a recommendation in the staff report, which is to receive information and establish a downtown advisory committee. If council passes that motion now and maybe changes your discussion when you talk about advisory committees generally in the next item. Either way, it needs to be talked about tonight. And. Anything else from?
When, I, I'm going to be very, very, when, when do you want to talk about it? Do you want to talk about it now? Do you want to talk about it in the next, the next matter on the agenda? Okay. Well, why don't we talk about it now? Seeing as the, the cat's already out of the bag, let's, let's talk about it now. There is an indication that in order to. Patch our way to, to the decision that we're going to make with respect to the BIA. There's a suggestion that we form a downtown advisory committee to help us get from point A to point B. Is there? Any conversation that anybody wants to have with that? Let's wait till we'll talk about it now. Go ahead, Counselor Norrie.
Thank you, your worship. You're having, as I said, been involved with them. I think it's necessary for thinking I'm going ahead with the BIA. You've got to keep some motion going and you have some very good people. That are experts downtown and would be willing to work following the rules of council. But I think it is necessary to have this advisory until we know we're going to have a BIA or not. And I think there's a couple of counselors interested in assisting with that. So. I, I think it's a must, especially since we said we're putting the letters out and we're endorsing having a BIA. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Is there any other conversation we want to have with this? Or does Counselor Norrie want to make that by way of motion?
I will. I move.
Is there a second or Counselor Shank? Comments, questions, concerns? Does anybody else have anything they want to add with respect to this? First of all, I guess, Jess, do you have the motion? And do you have what you need?
So through your worship, the motion I have is the motion as in staff report that council received their report for information and direct staff to establish. A downtown advisory committee to oversee operations. I will amend that to say to operations during this transitional period.
Counselor Shay.
That's what I was going to ask because what the staff recommendation is, there's, you know, like for your, but you've, you answered all my questions, Jessica. That's what I was gonna ask, because what the staff recommendation is, there's, you know, like for your, but you've, you answered all my questions, Jessica.
Is there any other comments, questions or concerns? We'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Okay. And I'm gonna look for your assistance here, Jess, are we, do we, have we covered off everything with respect to nine point two that we need to cover off? And Annie, I'll look to you for assistance as well, is there anything else we need to cover off?
Through your worship, I think we have everything covered, all being well.
Perfect, thank you, yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thanks, moving on, nine point three Advisory Committees Mandates and Appointments for twenty twenty-two. Okay. We have a number of committees that we haven't filled and some of them are old committees and, and ones that. Were somewhat mandated to deal with and some are new committees. I think probably the easiest way to deal with this is we just deal with it one by one, we'll make the motion with respect to the committees and pick the members of council with respect to those committees. As we go along, will that make your life any easier, Jess?
Certainly, and if I might add one additional comment?
Yes.
So council will notice on this report, we have attached sample terms of reference and sample mandate letters. We are asking tonight if council. Approves of the concept of mandate letters to approve that concept tonight and then once a member is appointed. To a committee, staff will work with that member and any other comments either tonight or through messages directly from council. To refine that letter and bring that back to the next meeting for endorsement and ratification by the rest of council. What we're looking for tonight is not necessarily that you agree with every point in those documents, but just that you agree with the idea of. That being a good way to manage committees and keep them sort of running parallel to council.
Everybody's got that. Thanks, Jess, okay, well, let's start off, let's try and see if we can get through some of these. The Heritage Committee, the Heritage Advisory Committee, the Heritage Committee is a committee that we've had and I think we're somewhat mandated to have. If I'm not mistaken. If we have heritage building, heritage building, we have to have a Heritage Committee, I think, so. That's the first one that we can try and deal with. I guess we can do it by way of motion to establish the committee first and then we'll establish who's interested in sitting in with that, is that gonna make sense?
That works for you.
Let's give it a go and see, see what happens. So that council confirmed the continuation of the Heritage Advisory Committee. And this is just a suggested motion and confirm the appointment of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term of council of one member of council. And further that the committee terms of reference and twenty twenty-three mandate letter be brought to the next regular meeting for endorsement. Following council review and feedback. Will, does somebody want to make that by way of motion, Counselor Penal, seconded by Counselor Norrie? Is there any comments or questions with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried, now I'll look for a call for nominations for the position of. On the Heritage Advisory Committee. Confirmed nominees, accepts the nomination, so is anybody want to nominate, be nominated to sit on the Heritage Committee, Counselor Norrie?
I nominate Counselor Ward five, William Martin, for the Heritage Committee.
Counselor Martin, will you accept that?
Yes.
Thank you, we have Counselor Martin, is there anybody else that wants to nominate anybody with respect to the Heritage Advisory Committee? Seeing none, I will look for a resolution to close the nominations and to appoint Counselor Martin. Heritage Advisory Committee for the term of council, moved by Counselor Penal, seconded by Counselor Shank. Any further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Next up, we have the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee. The council confirmed the continuation and this, the Arts and Culture one was, we had that in the past, the term of council as well, so. We'll look for a motion with respect to confirm the continuation of the Arts and Council Committee and confirm that the appointment of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term of council. Of one member of council and further that the committee tier, terms of reference and twenty twenty-three mandate letter be brought to the next regular meeting of council. For endorsement, following council review and feedback. What's our thoughts on the Arts and Culture Committee? I guess we'll put it on the floor first, we'll look for a motion, put it on the floor and then talk about it. Moved by. Nobody? Counselor Penal, seconded by. Deputy Mayor Calver, what's our thoughts and concerns with respect to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee? Any comments or questions? Good thing, bad thing?
Do we have a committee now of Arts and Culture?
We did in the last term of council, yes.
Through your worship, yes, we, we have had a Arts and Culture Committee for the past few terms of council.
Other thoughts and concerns, questions, we'll call the question, all in favor of forming the Arts and Cult, Arts and Cultural Committee? Opposed, motion carried, so now we all call for nominations for the position of counselor on this, this committee. Does anybody want to nominate anybody to sit on the Arts and Cultural Committee? Counselor Martin.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Bob Norrie, word for.
Thanks, Counselor Martin, Counselor Norrie, do you accept the nomination? Thank you very much, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll look for a resolution to, sorry, I'll look for. I'll look for a resolution to close nominations and to appoint Counselor Bob Norrie to the Arts and Cultural Committee. For the term of council, moved by. Counselor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver, any further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Where do we want to go from here, we done that one? Yeah, I think so, Jess. Waste of version, we're gonna do that later. Let's try the Recreation Advisory Committee, now the Recreation Advisory Committee is a new committee that, that's, that we're looking at this year, we haven't had one in the past. We probably should have, but it, it's just a new way of looking at how we do recreation within the community. We also will have. This is where we're gonna have a discussion, this is that we have a pool committee as well, do we want to include the pool advisory committee within? The Recreation Advisory Committee, or do we want to keep them as two separate entities? Counselor Penel.
Through your worship, I, I believe that it would benefit, I, I would, I would rather see it separate. Although I know that. A pool committee is part of recreation, but I think this is to establish, if it was an aquatics committee, it might be a little bit different, but it's a pool committee. Or, sorry, it is, how are we saying this, it is aquatics, right?
Uh, yeah, sorry, it is an aqua, I, I said, well advisory, but it's actually aquatics.
Well, because it's in here twice, right, there is a pool advisory committee? Where am I here?
That might be misnaming on my list that I gave them there.
Yeah, so it was, you know, if it was pool advisory committee, then that's to develop the actual foundation of it. And then aquatics would be the recreational part of it, right, so we gotta talk about that, but I know that. There are members of, for many, many, many years of some sort. Either a pool committee or, or an aquatics committee, whatever you want to call it, task force. That want to continue with their work and I don't want to see that get absorbed. By hockey and baseball and pickleball and stuff like that in the recreation, so. My thoughts are to have it stand alone, but we'll see what rest of council wants to see.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's put a motion on the floor and, and we'll do it this way, we'll, we'll deal with the Recreation Advisory Committee first. We'll look for a motion for the establishment of the Recreation Advisory Committee. And confirm the appointment of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six term of council of one member of council. And further that the committee terms and references and the twenty twenty-three mandate letter be brought to the next regular meeting of, for endorsement. Following council review and feedback, so we'll look for a motion, put that one on the floor, Counselor Norrie, seconded by. Deputy Mayor Calver, now's the time for conversation with respect to the Recreation Advisory Committee. Good idea, bad idea, something we need? Counselor Norrie?
I think, I think it, I mean, it's not just water, it's, it's baseball, it's everything, we don't know what's coming down the pipe, so. And, and just as a side note, I acquiesce to what Counselor Penel said, he's been involved with aquatics for years, even before he's on council. He thinks it's good to separate it. I'll, I'll agree with him.
Thank you. Did they, Counselor Martin?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to have a recreation committee for sure. Years ago, we, we had a recreation committee and even the, I know when I was on the executive in Avenue Minor Hockey, the. Representative of the Recreation Committee sat in on our meetings and we sat. We had a representative sit in the Recreation Committee, so, you know, each one of the sports had a rep in the committee, so. I think it's a good idea, we're a sports talent, so.
Yeah, very, very, very much so, you're not gonna get an argument from me, Bill, so, any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to form the Recreation Advisory Committee, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried, so we formed that and now we'll be looking for nominations for position of counselor. On the Recreation Advisory Committee, is there any nominations out there, does anybody want to sit on it? Counselor Norrie?
I'll nominate deputy.
Deputy Mayor Calver, do you accept the nomination? Thank you very much, is there any other nominations for the position? Seeing none? I'll look for a resolution to close the nominations and to appoint Deputy Mayor Calver to the recreational, Recreation Advisory Committee. For the term of council, moved by. Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Hicks, is there any other further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? All, motions carried. Last but simply, certainly not least is a, how do we want to refer to this, as the aquatics committee or the pool committee? Madam clerk?
So, through your worship, I suppose it could be assumed when Counselor Penel was appointed to the Aquatics Committee. That council implicitly affirmed the continuation of that committee, we have already had an appointment to that. We do also need to appoint a member to the newly established downtown core advisory committee.
Yes, very much so, we overlooked that at the time, didn't we? Thank you for looking after me, so are we gonna need a motion with respect to the Aquatics Committee or the Pool Committee? Since we've already established that Counselor Penel is gonna be the council member on that.
I believe we are okay on that, we will just, we'll bring that mandate in terms of reference for. Ratification of council on the fourteenth, along with the other ones.
Okay, so now what we're gonna do is look for nominations for the position of counselor on the newly formed downtown advisory committee? Am I correct with that? Are there any nominations with respect to that? Am I allowed to do a nomination? I'm gonna nominate Counselor X. Does Counselor Hicks stand for the nomination?
I'll accept, as, as Mr. Penel is going, are you interested in that one?
Are there any other nominations with respect to this? Seeing none, I'll look for a resolution to close the nominations and to appoint Counselor Hicks to the Downtown Advisor Committee. For the term of council, moved by Counselor Penel, seconded by Counselor Shank. Any further questions, comments or concerns, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried.
Well, we also. See, excellent, market square, Counselor Penel was also appointed to that one already, so if we wanna.
Have we, have we got all the committees we?
The, the one other one that was not discussed is that at the December meeting, council said. If there's a staff person interested in sitting in on the Loyalist Parkway Association, that would be an option. And if not, a counselor would stand for that, we did have a expression of interest from the. General Manager of Community and Corporate Services of council wants to endorse that or if council wants to appoint a council member to that committee, that's the last one on our list.
I think that we, I think we, we asked and we didn't have any takers, but we can ask again if there's any takers with respect to it, if not, we can assign the staff member, I guess, right, so. Does anybody want to nominate anybody for the, for that committee as well?
Sorry, I.
Yeah, the Loyalist Parkway Association.
Yeah, yeah, can I nominate somebody?
Absolutely.
Somebody did the last time, I think we talked about this, I'll nominate Mike Shank. Counselor, Mike Shank.
Counselor Shank, will you stand for the nomination?
It, it does, they don't sit that often, you know what I mean, just a little bit of history of it. It was, it was, as per the MOU that was signed in two thousand, it was on council time. And they do a lot of good, you know, for planting trees and stuff like this, and we have, you know, two parks or one park definitely is owned by, by the municipality. Down across from Matura, so. Between myself and Brett Satterberg, I think we could have it covered, just in case I'm. If I can't go that day, we'll talk amongst ourselves and we'll go that way, yeah.
I'm sensing that's a yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I live on it, you know, hello.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll call for the nomination, or sorry, I'll look for a resolution to close the nominations, appoint Counselor Mike Shank to the. Loyalist Parkway Association? For the term of council? Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver, any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Okay, I think we've made our way through that, if I'm not mistaken, Jess, have we got everything? Okay. Thanks, folks.
I don't think we're gonna get this all done.
Yeah, we'll look for a motion to go beyond ten o'clock and I'm hoping that it's not gonna be much beyond ten o'clock, so. Oh, we'll, we'll get done by then, moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion? We're trying to be a little proactive here, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Nine point four, Infrastructure Services Waste Diversion Committee, committee extension and member reappointment. Christie? Do you want to talk to this? Okay, so what we need to do, I, I think what the, the suggestion is, is that we leave the members, we don't have to select members for this committee. But we will need to look for nominations for a council member to sit on it, am I correct? Okay, so the recommendation that council received for information, the Infrastructure Services Waste Diversion Committee, committee extension and member reappointment report. And further that council reinstates the Waste Diversion Committee until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and further that council appoint a council representative to join. The Waste Diversion Committee and further that the council reappoint the existing members of the Waste Diversion Committee, so we'll move that, get it on. So we'll move that, get it on the floor. Yes, sorry, moved by councillor Pinnell, seconded by councillor Hicks. We want to do, look for nominations now, Jess, are we going to? Okay, all in favor of this motion, opposed, motions carried. So now what we'll do is we'll look for nominations for position of councillor. On this committee, the committee has already been formed, it's just a matter of, go ahead, councillor Norrie.
At a request, I nominate William Martin, councillor in board five.
Councillor Martin, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Stand for it. Thank you very much, councillor Martin. Is there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll look for a resolution to close the nominations and to appoint councillor Bill Martin to the Waste Diversion Committee. For the term of council, moved by councillor Pinnell, seconded by councillor Shank. Any other further questions, comments, concerns, all in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Yes, I think we're going to, we're going to take a recess, we've been at this long enough and I think it's time for, for a fifteen minute break. Sorry, folks, we'll be back in fifty minutes, thank you. Perfect, welcome back, everybody. It's nine point five on the, on the agenda, Legislative Services, the Exotic Animals Bylaw. Review. Jessica, did you want to comment first, or?
Sure, um, so, for your worship, council has heard a deputation tonight. Asking for more time and deliberation to go into this bylaw. Since there was a bylaw that was originally presented in draft form on January tenth. Based on the. Sorry, over here, ninety-eight survey responses from the community. That seem to indicate stronger preference to have that bylaw, but scale back on what animals are included in appendix. We did that, that's the bylaw that's before you on tonight's agenda. From staff's perspective, the, the reason for doing that was we felt it was better to have something in place. Rather than our current status quo of having nothing in place, that there's, there's some regulation of exotic animals. We do appreciate and understand the perspective of our deputation tonight. And, and their concern about having. A wide variation in what municipalities are passing for their lists of restricted and prohibited animals, so. We are very open to what council's direction is on this. If we want to pass it tonight, if we want to send it back to the drawing board for another look at it. Really just looking to see what you guys want to do here tonight.
Through your worship, Jessica, do you think by, by taking into consideration from the deputation today? That I was going to make that much of a change, like. A little confused what they were asking for us, which is that they wanted us to incorporate that chart that they had, that what they wanted to do.
Through your worship, my understanding is what they would ideally like us to do is to do what the city of Kingston, for example, has done. Where their animal control bylaw has a list of what you are allowed. Has a list of what you are allowed. You are allowed a dog, you are allowed a cat, you are allowed. Not very many things. It's a pretty short list. If it's not on the list, it's not allowed. That is. From a restrictions perspective, a much easier way to manage. Because you don't have to dream up every possible thing somebody might want to keep as a pet. It's also on the very far end of what you're allowing residents to own as pets. As the community feedback that we got again, only the only people who are going to engage in your surveys are typically the people who have very strong opinions on the subject, but. But we did get about a fifty two percent response rate that said. You're already going too far with this list. You're being too strict. This isn't your business. Sure, go ahead and tell me I can't have a tiger, but it's not your place to tell me I can't have an iguana or a hedgehog or a parrot. So we tried to respect that in in our initial or in what we're bringing to council here tonight. But understanding that people who work professionally with animals are do also have a different perspective on this.
Thank you. Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship. So Jessica, what does Hastings have? Because I know that they just went through. The big cat situation.
So through your worship Hastings has what we had on our January tenth agenda attached to that staff report. We did also have our legal counsel take a look at. The main body of that bylaw and they did provide us a written opinion that. Should there be the same problem that Hastings had with a. Roadside. Big cat zoo trying to operate that bylaw would give you the sufficient tools to address it. Whether it's. One that's existing at the time that the bylaws passed and it's not operating safely or up to good animal welfare standards, or if it's one that tries to come in after the bylaws been passed. We're pretty confident that 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 language in the main body is good. What appears to be under debate is. What animals does it apply to? Do you want to cast a very wide net or a very narrow net? In how you're addressing that.
Is any of this grandfathered? So if I have a, I read something that someone had submitted about a ball python, you know.
So through your worship, in what's here tonight, we actually took the ball pythons out. We replaced it with if it is venomous and or over six feet long, then it's not allowed. Instead of trying to say this kind of snake is allowed, but this. Makes sense. The other thing with the grandfathering is the wording in there is ninety. The day the bylaws passed, there's a ninety day window to come forward and say, I have this pet. I had it before you pass this bylaw. I want to register it. Here is my safety plan. Here is where it is so that emergency services can know if they're responding to that address. That there is a potentially dangerous animal at that location. Here is my plan that this animal is being cared for appropriately. And then it's then it's allowed to stay.
I think to me, that's fair. You're not telling someone to get rid of it. You're just asking them to confirm that they're taking care of it properly, which is, I think, what everybody wants to see in this situation.
Council panel. Then I'll get to you, counselor.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to make a quick ask on on what was just said. When we when these people say that they had the animal prior to this bylaw and they come register, is there any costs associated with that to them?
Through your worship, no, there's not.
Right, thank you.
Through your worship, Jesse, you're you're an expert at bylaws. That's one of the reasons we hired you. Are you satisfied with this one? I think this meets the needs of the town. I don't want to keep reinventing the wheel and going over this a hundred thousand times. Are you satisfied? I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know.
Through your worship, I am satisfied that this meets the needs of the town and the concerns that have been brought to this council. That instigated us putting this bylaw back on the table and the concerns and comments and feedbacks we got from residents. I do strongly believe, as as do many people involved in this, that this should ideally be enforced provincially. So you have a consistent set of rules. You don't have four hundred and forty four different rules. If you move somewhere and now your pet's not allowed anymore. But in the meantime. I I think this will work for us. I do understand and appreciate the concerns that were brought to us. The other thing is the way it's set up, the animals are listed in an appendix. If there's ever a desire to change that appendix, that's very easily done.
Thank you. Good job.
Or sorry Deputy Mayor Calver, thank you worship. So just to verify if we vote and approve this bylaw tonight. We can make amendments or massage it a little bit if if need be down the road.
Through through your worship, absolutely. You could even mandate regular reviews on a scheduled timeline ideally. All our bylaws get looked at more than once every twenty years. But we've definitely seen it in in other municipalities where it's constantly evolving based on what the community needs and are at the time.
My issue or concern, I guess, is with bylaws. I constantly hear, well, there's not enough teeth in the bylaw. There's not enough teeth in the bylaw to reinforce or to do enforcement. Is this going to give us the tools we need for enforcement if it comes down to that?
Through your worship, ba- based on the legal opinion that we received on this bylaw, it would, we would be able to, if there was a. Problematic situation with one of these animals. Existing in the community, we would have the tools to address it.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? Okay, well, we have a recommendation that council received for information legislative service exotic animal bylaw review report and further that council adopt the exotic animals by law as presented. That's our staff recommendation moved by counselor panel seconded by counselor Hicks. Is there any further conversation with respect to the bylaw? Seeing none, we'll call the vote all in favor. Opposed motions carried. Legislative service is short term accommodations discussion and update. Is that yours as well, Jess? Did you want to speak to it first?
No, I think it stands for itself, but I am happy to make questions.
Is there any questions with respect to this report that we have a staff recommendation that council receive for information, the short term accommodations discussion update? And further that council endorsed the continuation of the enforcement approach as presented in the October eleventh, twenty twenty two meeting. That's the recommendation. We have a mover and a seconder, and then we can have a conversation. Sir, panel, counselor Norrie, comments, questions, concerns, counselor shake.
I just, you're gonna bear with me. I'm sorry. I'm not the best for the only comes. What was what was decided on October twenty second of.
Certainly through your worship, what was determined at that point. Prior to that, we had presented some enforcement and licensing ish options. The feedback that we got from council at the time was. The problem in Greater Napanee, we didn't seem to have enough problem operators that council felt a license fee annually was was justified and they. Directed us to focus on updating, adding more teeth to the bylaws to specifically address the nuisance issues occurring. So our first target priority has been the noise bylaw. We are working on revisions to that and hope to bring that in front of council within the first quarter. Also on our list to look at are the. Issues with how parking is managed, garbage yards, property standards. To try to address the complaints rather than enforcing an entire licensing system on everybody.
Makes sense to me. So we have a property standards bylaw. Now, don't we have one who does both roles, dual roles, property standards also? With Mike, I think Mike's department is is he working on that also? Because there's, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Through your worship, the the property standards bylaw referred to specific to the building. So if there are deficiencies with the the buildings themselves, then. The individual you're referring to, yes, would be. Dealing with that specifically, however, yard issues and garbage piling up, that'd be a separate issue.
Sir Hicks or no?
Through your worship. So I have spoken to someone who lives right next door to a short term accommodation on Sherman's Point. And what they described to me is hell. When you can't invite your family and your grandchildren over to spend the afternoon at your waterfront property on the back deck. Because the noise and the language. Coming from the people currently in residence next door for two days, but it's two days that you can't use your property because. You know, nobody needs to be exposed to that. So I'm speaking on their behalf that. It needs, when someone is experiencing something like that. How do we address it? So do we send, do we request that the bylaw officer go out on a Saturday afternoon at five o'clock after? You know, a keg from somewhere has been consumed and you've got a bunch of rowdy. Rowdy people on the deck. How does how do we? How do we help the person that's lived in at the property for twenty five, thirty years and has paid taxes consistently? How do we help them? I mean, everybody, they're both both property owners or taxpayers. But one cares and the other one doesn't seem to. I don't know how. How do we address that?
Did you want to try and address that? You want me to give it a go and then you can clean it up for me?
Through your worship. I will say it is, it is a challenge, particularly as a lot of the issues are happening on weekends and evenings. That is where. And it is challenging because that's that's where the idea of a licensing bylaw. Does hold some appeal where you can see here's your set of standards. Here's your code of conduct. If you aren't meeting these. Specific to having a rental property and putting that onus on the property owner, whether or not they are there. Does the value from that? Justify the the cost of managing that type of program justify the cost of. Making every person who rents out their cottage to people. For the times they're not there in the summer, pay a licensing fee and operate as a license as well. Those were sort of the questions the last council was wrestling with. And at the time, the direction that we got was we were better to try and focus on the problematic behavior, but. But I do understand your point. Some of those things are unique and specific to short term rentals and they aren't captured as adequately in those other bylaws.
So through your worship, I have one follow up question for the chief. So no license, nobody knows. It's a two bedroom. Cottage on the water. And you get an emergency services call. So two bedroom, you would think maximum for people. And you show up and it's a bonfire on the water gone out of control and. You don't know what you're walking into because you can't look at something and say, ah, this is a short term rental. I personally am in favor. I'm just going to state I'm in favor of licensing. A, it's a revenue source. People are making money. So and and they're using and in some cases abusing our services, so, but please.
So through your worship, we're responding to these calls that you've just very well articulated already. For the past three to four years, we've been training our officers and fire crews. Situational awareness, when you're going to a house in town, we don't know how many families are living in it and that sort of stuff. So I appreciate your. Content of the question, we approach all of these locations the same way. There's a possibility there's going to be multiple patients, multiple people. We do go to and I we've been to the place on Sherman's Point numerous times. Unfortunately, we we feel for the neighbors as well. But we can't treat anybody differently when we show up. We have to be cognizant that the people that are there have paid money to be there. We're not the police, but we we do. We do try to alleviate any of the friction between both tenants and the residents, so. It's it's a tough situation, but we don't go in there with eyes closed.
So if I may, one further. So we want emergency services to be aware if there's a hedgehog. Okay, a hedgehog.
We took that out. A tiger or a poisonous snake.
Or poison the snake or what have you, but what creature is living at this this house? We want a license for that. But we don't want a property to have a license that is renting out. I I would be concerned. If I had children or or grandchildren and I have no idea who these people are moving, they're in and out. It's a it's rolling over. Every three days or every week, so I I am in favor of a license.
Counselor Shaq, then counselor panel.
Chief well knows I've been to numerous calls. Complaints this, that, and every other thing, but the point is is. In your report, there was four. For STAs that, you know, people that complained about where there was neighbors now. If we beef up our nuisance and other things, because here's somebody that's totally abusing it. And I have a piece of property where somebody did the same thing and I I dealt with it my way, but. Then no more problems, but they had, can you explain to me why can we not have the OPP if they call the OPP? Did they have any jurisdiction over those things? Do they have, like, what can they do to solve these problems? Because. I hate bylaws because the only reason why we have all bylaws is because you got a couple of doughheads that just abuse the situation. And erects it for all the other people that are trying to do it. All right, so why can't we just go after the individuals that are abusing the situation? All right, and making it totally uncomfortable. All right. You know, is there, can there not be a letter sent to that individual saying you're contributing everything else? We've had numerous complaints on this. If this continues. You know, enforcement will be or whatever, but what can we do besides penalizing all the other people because. Our family had rented, even though we live on the water, another place on the water that's further towards the ferry and that individual. They, I first thing when I went in, I took a look, they had a permit and everything was in order. Everything was great and. When I was on the fire department. The next door neighbor always complained about that because there was different people there and we were quiet. We were great. There was no problems. In the landowner that we had rented from for the family. They were great. They gave all the information, what to do, what not to do, and it was just a family setting. So I hate to see that one getting hammered. Because you've got another person that's just running it out to whoever they want. So it's just a party destination from somebody where else. You know, I mean, so my heart goes out to the landowners that decide that, but how can we go after that enforce that individual? And it's abusing the system without hitting everybody else. That's where I would like to go ahead and focus are what can we do to protect those four people that are abusing the situation? Further work for somebody to. Or I'll deal with it.
Counselor panel.
Thank you worship through you. Just the comment of being on the last term of council and dealing with this. I just repeat what my thoughts were back then is a. You know, piece of enjoyment is more of a concern for me than making a few hundred bucks off of a license. I think what we need to do is continue on with putting teeth into our noise bylaws or nuisance bylaws. And and go that route so that if there is an issue, then we can react on that. Down the road, if we have to start to send fines or something, we could look at adjusting our bylaws or something along that line, but right now. You know, there there should be, I'm just because there should be quiet times, you know, if it's eleven o'clock, you've got to put it down. If you're in the campground, it'd be similar to that, so. Let's let's put down some bylaws here or or. So let's, let's put down some bylaws here or, or nuisance and go that route and, and worry about the other. This is what something we can do right away. The other we can, we can continue to work on. That's, that's where I stand with that. Thank you.
Happy marriage.
Through your worship. Again, the licensing fee sounds great, but it's going to require everybody to be honest and come up forward and say they have them. Cost to bylaw, cost to enforce, cost to infect, all costs, cost, cost. Is there not something we can put in there when we have repeat offenders, such as what we're hearing here tonight? That we can find that property owner? Versus, you know, versus penalizing all the good people that are running them. I've got, I've got short terms out by me and you wouldn't even know it if the, if, if the landowner didn't come and tell me. You just don't know it. It's just like they're having company over, right? So why penalize everybody when it's a small few? That's wrecking it.
So through your worship, that is a feedback and comment that we can take into consideration as we are drafting potential changes to our bylaws. I, I do know that escalating fines is typically something you would see in the administrative monetary penalties structure, which I know the previous council was not interested in pursuing, but we will see if there's any other ways that we could do that.
Go ahead, Counselor Shaq.
Now, this goes from experience. We have a chief that just thrives on those problems. So what I got to pass the buck to the chief is that when we, we haven't almost had a bird complaint. And we've had some people that have had bird complaints at an SDA numerous times, two or three or four times. This, I just like to know if any way possible, if the fire department gets called to a situation of that nature. As long as we can, the town itself, it doesn't go to the county. If we can get that fine money back to the municipality, all right, that would offset some of the calls. That if it's a numerous thing, that the chief would respond or whatever. Because if there was, if it was a numerous call advance at a certain location, when I was on, I'd always ask for the, the, you know, on call chief or whatever to respond. But if something like that happened, could they not do an enforcement that way? I'm just something to think about before the next meeting or whatever, something to what you could do and what chief could possibly come up with. You know?
Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, so how do you enforce? How do you go about enforcing a fine to a property owner who's living somewhere in Toronto? And sets foot there twice a year. He has someone come in and cut the grass and not often from what I saw, because it was a good four inches higher than everybody else's. Like, how, how do we go about doing that? Do you, do you tack it on their tax bill?
So through your worship, I was just going to answer Counselor Shaq's question by answering yours as well. So the way that it works right now is, so we have a fire burn permit, bylaw, open air burning bylaw. If we issue a fine and it's not paid, we pass it off to finance as an invoice and it gets put on their tax bill. And I, after that, there's a stipulation, if it's not paid, then, then it goes somewhere else. But yeah, it can be put on their tax bill for sure.
So that would be for a burn permit.
Well, that's how we do it with burn permits. So I, I don't know, Paul, maybe you can jump in on other fines, but I believe that, I know that some of our MTO invoicing happens the same way. We, we don't invoice people in, in the municipality for accidents, but we do if they don't have a, a local residence.
So the guy's a property owner, but he's not a resident. He still gets the tax bill. Okay.
Counselor Norrie.
Just a little, not going to go on too much, just thinking outside the box. We right now don't have enough people to enforce a bylaw. Unfortunately, and it's not their fault or her fault. If we get more bylaw, then we possibly we can, but I've heard the costing from our CIO when they did it, I think it was Rama, was phenomenal. Thinking outside the box, the Ontario government finds drivers of cars with red light cameras, not the driver. Can't we do something again with taxes like the first, the owner of the place gets a warning, stop it? We don't care who the person is yelling, you'll start getting a thousand dollar fine on your taxes and hit them that way. Just thinking outside the box, do we get legal to look into it? Like, is that legal? Is it, you know, because, I mean, that way we're not hiring someone to enforce, we just put it on their taxes. And they don't pay their taxes, we sell their place. I mean, I'm thinking outside the box, but.
If I can jump in here. This was part of the ongoing discussion at last council. So currently our bylaw enforcement, we can only issue fines under the provincial offenses act, which means a part one fine, a part two fine and a part three information. A part one fine or fines up to a thousand dollars plus a victim surcharge in court costs, which has to be served personally to the person. A part two fine reserved strictly for parking tickets is not applicable anywhere else. A part three information, as Bob and Terry would, is essentially a court summons and that comes with a whole whack of costs associated to it. But you essentially sit down with your prosecutor, you decide what you'd like to seek for a fine. It goes through a trial process. If you cannot reach a resolution, you will have an official trial that can be appealed through the Superior Court of Justice. Currently, we have no fees or charges that we can send an invoice like the fire department does. That was something that we were looking at through an administrative monetary penalty system. That got shut down from the last term of council. There were some very valid concerns with that. So currently what we have, we have some very out of date bylaws, as Jessica has mentioned, that we're working on updating and hopefully bring to this new term of council in the first quarter with some actual teeth that we can enforce our noise bylaw with. Currently, if somebody calls to complain, the only provision in our noise bylaw that is an offense is to cause or to permit to be caused. Any unnecessary noise that is deemed a disturbance at the point of reception, not very anonymous, not for me to decide. So the person who complains would have to be comfortable testifying in court, providing a statement and would not be able to remain anonymous as all of our other bylaw enforcement complaints are. So we are looking at revamping that to find a system that would let us do that. But because it is so out of date, we're kind of at a loss for words. So if somebody were to complain right now, we would send them a letter to the property that says, hey, just an FYI, this is our noise bylaw. We've received a complaint. If the person's not, if the complaint is not comfortable after that fact and testifying, can't go any farther.
Question? So, Aggie, does that mean we send a letter? So we send a letter snail mail, it gets to Toronto two weeks later. Meanwhile, the people that have been there and caused the disturbance are long gone. Like, it, I'm just, there's got to be a way to make it more immediate.
And that's what Jessica and I are working on with updating our noise bylaw. Nothing with a noise bylaw will ever really work exceptionally fast, especially under a noise bylaw. The most of time sensitive enforcement that you would see would be if it's a mischief call to the police or a public nuisance call to the police. But we are working on making it more effective. It hasn't been updated in a great number of years. We're looking at over a decade at this point. So it's, it's time and we are working on it and I know that it's an existing problem, but progress is coming. That's all I can say.
I, I think, and maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but we're thinking, we're talking long term, short term, air rate. Short term, we're looking at updating our bylaws to make them put more teeth in to make. Long term, we may get into a discussion with whether or not we're going to regulate these things or, or how we're going to deal with it. But I guess, I think for tonight's discussion, do we want to continue forward short term to try and add some to update? Because I think if I'm not mistaken, that's where a lot of the conversations were, was we have existing bylaws, but they don't really have any teeth to them. And we do, we can call the OPP, but the OPP, it's not their mandate. They're going to deal with the noise complaint at hand, but it's not really their problem. So where, where, where I think we're running into problems is that we have bylaws that might deal with it, but really don't deal with it. So that's, I think what, correct me if I'm wrong, that's where we're at tonight is we're just going, we're starting to update them. But there may be a longer term conversation that we need to have with respect to short term accommodations in general. So.
If I may, we can do both short term and long term, right? We can focus on the long term goal while affecting, while effectively fixing the short term problem. And that's kind of what this discussion was supposed to be about.
That, that, I mean, that's where we're at tonight. Do we want to continue on? I, I mean, I think at this point, and, and given the late hour, that's probably the direction that we should go in. And we can always, I mean, this thing isn't dead in the water by any stretch of the imagination. We continue on with the direction we're going. But at some point in the not too distant future, we can also bring it back and, and, and see how we're making out with it, where we're going with it. And if it's actually working or not, I think.
There is a motion on the table, yes, to just endorse that direction from October 11th, which was this short term. Update these bylaws.
So everybody knows the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Nine point seven, the winter parking forgiveness program. Yes?
Yeah, through, through your worship, this is pretty brief. We did a trial run of a winter parking forgiveness program. Recommendation is to make it permanent, but maybe rename it toys for tickets. So it's more immediately apparent what we're talking about and maybe make it easier to run through finance. But we do think it was a good idea, maybe better promotion would help it get more traction next time. And just looking for a council to endorse making it permanent instead of a trial run.
Counselor, sorry, Counselor Norrie. Staff recommendation. Move staff recommendation. Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Hicks, is there any further conversation? Go ahead, Counselor Penau.
Thank, thank you worship. I think it's, you know, there wasn't very many, very much participation in it. It was first year, there's many things that we can do to change. So it's a work in progress. I like the whole idea, but I was also wondering too, if somebody doesn't want to provide a toy to, in exchange for the ticket, could we not just make a timeline where all tickets, we just take those monies and buy or donate those monies to the toy drive? Is there something we could do that way?
Go ahead, Jess.
Through, through your worship, I do think just philosophically, I think it's important to let that be opt in. I don't think we can take people's parking ticket money and unilaterally say we're giving this as a donation to the fire department. We can certainly, finance can help us facilitate cash donations for tickets. We maybe didn't communicate that as well as we could have this year. But I don't think we have the standing to just say all of your money is going to the toy drive, whether you want it or not.
Well, e- either way, I'm very supportive of, of what we started and it's early days, so let's continue.
There might be, if I may, your worship, there might be alternative options as well. We could proceed if somebody pays a parking ticket, they could reach out by email with their parking ticket number and say, hey, I want this to go through for a donation. Instead of having somebody come to the office as well. There's several options out there, there's a lot to be explored.
And those options can be brought forward, updated report with changes to the policy based on the success rate of the program.
Yes.
Okay, do we have? We do?
Yep.
Everybody knows what the motion is, we'll call the vote, all in favor? Sorry?
I missed the motion, I was trying to.
Oh, sorry, I'll, I'll just go over it. That Mary Culver, so is that council receive for information legislative services, winter parking forgiveness program reports where she was part. And further that council provide direction to continue the program going forward and direct staff to bring an updated report with changes to the policy based on the success rate of the program.
So it's just for winter parking, correct?
It's just for winter parking. And I think if I'm not mistaken, it's for the month of December. Is that what we did or something similar to that?
Yeah, through your worship, it's in that window around Christmas, pretty, pretty common program. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So if we're all aware of what the, the motion is, we'll call the vote, all in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Growth and expansion. Michael again. Amendment to the guidelines for the implementation of consent policies for development on private services.
Thank you worship. So dovetailing from the conversations that we had at the previous committee of adjustment meeting a lot, two weeks ago. Where we had a situation where there was a, you know, lot creation where the, you know, the lot was borderline on the five acre, five acre mark, which is the current policy. There's a good discussion around increasing that, that minimum threshold for size of a lot to require the installation of a well. Staff are recommending that we increase the minimum sizes of a lot where a condition would be imposed for the installation of a well from five acres to 10 acres or four hectares. In our zoning bylaw, we refer to four hectares for the threshold for new non-residential lots. So effectively, if there's a lot being created less than four hectares in area, it can only be used for residential purposes. And, and in doing so, we should be confident that we're able to service those lots with a potable water supply. So staff are recommending that we don't, we don't completely rescind the guidelines that have been in place since 2019. But we simply modify that minimum lot area for the installation of a well. There's, there's a lot of good information and a lot of good guidelines still contained within that, the 2017 policy directives around ensuring water is potable, water testing, et cetera. It's just that minimum threshold lot area that we're looking to amend this evening. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those of council.
Thank you worship through you. Michael, with the increased size of the lot going to almost 10 acres. Would this now eliminate the need in one of the, in the conditions to have a hydrology study?
Through your worship. Depend, it depends. If the lot to be created is in a dense cluster of existing developed properties, there would likely still be a need to have a look at that. We wouldn't need to go, you know, in, in some instances, we wouldn't need to go through a, you know, a full blown hydro geological study, which, you know, is quite costly. A lot of the conditions that we've been imposing are, you know, it's somewhat loose in that if it's a known area of, you know, good water, there's good amounts of water. A hydro geological review from a qualified hydro, hydro geologist would suffice. More of a desktop review where the, the professional would review area well records. They would review the well record of the new well, the pump test results, et cetera, and make a determination about, you know, you know, this is not going to cause adverse impacts to neighboring properties. But if it's in a, a borderline area, then, you know, we might be, need to do more in-depth testing onsite and measuring drawdown in adjacent wells. So i- in a, I guess I can't directly answer the question. It, it does depend on the existing density of the area where new lots being proposed ultimately is how we've been implementing the hydro geological condition.
So through your worship, thank you, Michael. So basically what I'm hearing is that each case will be individually looked at.
Correct, yeah, it's site specific review for each, each situation.
Thank you.
And this is just for consent. So this outside of a subdivision, so if we had a rural subdivision proposal, absolutely hydro geological review would, would be a necessity for application being made in that instance. But the consent process is intended to be less onerous where there's, you know, it's, you know, a lot here and there. It's not many lots in one confined area. So this is just for the consent process and yes, it'd be on a, on a site specific basis.
Thank you.
Just briefly, and, and this, this change is consistent with neighboring municipalities in, in, in the province, I guess, as well, right?
Yeah, yes, worship, that is correct. And our neighbors impose a similar threshold.
Go ahead, Counselor Shaq.
I'd like to put an exception in that anybody, if you're creating 10 acres on the water, there's no way you're going to be putting a drill well in. You're going to be putting a shore well in and you're guaranteed unless Lake Ontario goes dry. You know what I mean? So I've seen it in the past where, well, you got to drill a well, all right? Or you got to dig a well. Well, I've got a lake in front, in front of the lot. You're going to put a shore well in and then you'll never have to worry about hitting salt and sulfur or anything else.
Yeah.
So, so is there any way that that could be put into this that, you know, if you're on a, you know, on a water source of that nature? I don't know how you would word it correctly, but if you're on like Hay Bay or if you're But if you're on like Hay Bay, or if you're on a water, large area of water, you know, that you you will not have to be forced to drill a well. You know, you, you can just put your shore well. I know you're going to get water because it's like there.
Yeah. And bear in mind, I mean, through your worship and bear in mind that this is a guy, I guess, a guideline in effect. You know, it's a, it's a council policy, but, you know, council can deviate from that policy on a site specific basis. If it's, if it's deemed necessary, right? Or the committee could, I guess. It's really, this would be, you know, if the committee were were made up of different individuals, then this would be a council directive for that committee to impose conditions that council likes to essentially see on these types of applications. So with council being the committee, you know, you're, you can essentially deviate from that if you so choose. It's really intended to give that direction.
So this is more of a guideline.
It's more of a guideline.
So you have that latitude.
Yeah.
Sorry, man.
Yeah.
Okay, answer my question.
We got a motion here or no? I don't think we do, do we? No. Okay, well, we'll put a motion on the floor. There's the recommendation that council receive for information, the growth and expand services amendment to the guidelines, the implementation of consent policies for the development on private services report. And further, the council amend resolution two six eight slash seventeen to require a well to be installed as a condition of consent approval where new lots are created that are less than four hectares in area and/or the result and retained lot is less than four hectares in area. We'll look for someone to move that. Counselor Hicks, Counselor Penau. Is there any other further conversations, comments, discussions? Seeing none, we'll call the question all in favor, opposed, motions carried. Nine point nine infrastructure services, I think we've made a decision that I think we're going to defer this. There's a PowerPoint presentation and probably a discussion to go along with it. So I think, don't see any reason why we can, why we shouldn't be deferring this until maybe our next meeting or when whenever we can fit it in. Sounds good. Do we, do we need a motion for that or no?
Through your worship, if we could get a motion to defer, I would recommend based on the forward calendar I have in front of me, I think February 20th, if that's okay on your end. Just we do already have a number of presentations on February 14th, so we might run into the same timing issue that we had tonight.
Marv, so we'll look for a motion to defer the infrastructure services report to February 28th. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Shank. Is there any further comments, questions, seeing none? Oh, sorry, Counselor Penau, sorry.
Thanks through you worship. I just want to say, sorry, Christine, have you here all night? To have this deferred. So thank you for for coming. Thanks.
All in favor, opposed, motion carried. Bylaw, bylaw number 2023 009 and bylaw to prohibit the otherwise regulate the keeping of certain animals within the town of Greater Nap. We look for a motion with respect to that bylaw. Counselor Penau. Counselor Deputy Mayor Calver. Given a first, second and final reading that the bylaw be passed at a future meeting once amendments be. No, we don't need that. Sorry.
To that we're going to pass it as it is. So.
We need a first, second and final reading then. Any other conversation, questions, all in favor, opposed, carried. The bylaw with respect to interim tax levy. Number 20, bylaw 2023 dash zero zero one zero bylaw to set an interim tax levy for 2023. The bylaws is to authorize sending out tax notices with an interim levy based on the 22 rates. And that council will establish the actual rate, tax rates for 2023 after the budget has been approved and passed. Look for a motion for that bylaw moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Any comments, questions or concerns before we do the first, second and final reading?
So it's 50% last year, exactly what it says here, just for the audience that.
Yeah, just, just to get us through until we get the.
By this budget.
Excellent. Yeah. Yeah. We're at a first, second and finally passed. All in favor, opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number 2023 0011 a bylaw to appoint a fire chief. So the bylaw is to remove the interim tag and appoint Bill Hammond as the fire chief. Need a motion for the floor for that one moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Read a first, second and finally pass any conversations with respect to this. Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, carried. Very similar bylaw 2023 dash zero zero one two bylaw to appoint a deputy fire chief. Fully in a motion to put on the floor that we're pass the bylaw with respect to removing the interim tag to appoint Kevin Duncan as the deputy fire chief. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin, read a first, second time and finally passed. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, carried. New business, is there any new business anybody wants to bring up at this time of the evening? Seeing none. Notice emotions, is there any notice of motions that anybody wants to do this evening? Seeing none, statements by members, do any members have any statements that they want to say at this point? Seeing none, CEO's remarks. John, do you have any?
Thank you, worship. I see everybody wants to get out of here. Nobody wants to say anything. Couple of points, I'd like to thank all the outside workers with snow clearance. I know it's been, we've been catching up for the for the easy fall that we've had now in the dead winter. Inside workers, people 99 advanced, adjusting to the new environment. And look at how we do customer service over the next little while as we adapt to that. Most of staff now hunker down doing budgets. And I don't know who to thank for the last one, but I think with the recent bylaws that we passed with the fire chief and deputy fire chief have signaled, I think a change in how we do succession planning and talent management in this place. I'd like to thank the fire department for it and also a lot of the SLT that supported us along that way and council for supporting the the approach that we've taken.
Thank you. Any comments, concerns from that? Seeing none, look for a motion to enter into closed session. We have a recommendation that council resolve itself into closed session in order to discuss a personal matter about identifiable individual 239 to be prospective acquisition or disposition of land 239 to see and the a matter of solicitor client privilege 239 to F. Moved by Counselor Penau, seconded by Counselor Hicks, comments, questions, concerns, seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, motions carried. We'll be back very shortly. Thanks, folks.
Welcome back everyone. Rising report from closed session, look for motion to rise report from closed session moved by council. Shanks seconded by council panel all in favor opposed carried. We have council recommendation that council rise report from full session and further that all recommendations made within close session are hereby adopted. I'll report that in closed session council approved the closed session session meet minutes of January 10th, 2023. Received information regarding a matter of what an identifiable individual and a matter of solicitor client privilege and gave direction to staff. And received information regarding perspective disposition of land and gave direction to staff. And I'll look for further motion to confirm direction given to staff in closed session moved by council. X seconded by council panel.
Yeah, you're reading it now, sorry.
That council authorizes the agreement of purchase and sale of 10.75 acres of land in Richmond industrial park. As outlined in the confidential staff report of the general manager community and corporate services subject to the requirements of the town sale land by law. And further council authorizes the mayor and municipal clerk to execute the required documents for the sale of the 10.75 acre parcel on Circuit Rider Drive. We've got the motion. Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor of the motion opposed motions carried. Now we've got the forward calendar. I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions about that, but it's placed on our agenda. So we can see what's coming up in the future. And I think probably everybody's had a chance to peruse it. Uh, we'll look for a motion to confirm proceedings. Moved by council, second by council panel that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council for the corporation, the town of greater Napanee be read a first, second, and finally passed and that the mayor and clerk sign the same and affixed there to the seal of corporation. All in favor. Oppose motion carried motion for adjournment with council panel. Councilor Martin comments, questions, concerns, all in favor opposed. Thank you folks. It's been a long night, but we've, uh, we've traveled a long way tonight. So hopefully, uh, they'll get shorter from here. Thanks a bunch. Bye bye.